Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It is February 4th, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM.
Recording in progress.
I will call this meeting to order of the Select Board for the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access, pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? If not, I will note for the record that participating this evening are Liz Klein and myself, Joe Fisher. Bill Ramsey is unavailable this evening. The first item on our agenda is an executive session under Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy sessions with respect to collective bargaining with the Hingham Library Staff Association, local, need my glasses for that one. It is right, Local 888 SEIU AFLCIO. Before I annotate a motion to go into executive session under this item of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to enter executive session. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to conduct strategy sessions with respect to collective bargaining with the Hingham Library Staff Association, Local 888 SEIU AFLCIO, the Board will reconvene in open session.
I'll second that motion and I'll do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We'll move to executive session and we will return to open session. This meeting of the Select Board is now reconvened and we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has taken us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. These are the minutes from January 14th, 2025. Liz, are you ready?
Yes.
Then I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated January 14th, 2025.
I'll second that motion. Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill's not here, so use it. And myself, aye, the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is a potential vote to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Library Staff Association, local. And with us, we have members of our Personnel Committee, Courtney and David. You want to introduce yourselves for the record and give us a summary of where we are with that negotiation?
Sure. Courtney Orway, Kingham Personnel Board.
David Pace, Kingham Personnel Board.
Nice to have you be here tonight. Yeah, so we have concluded the memorandum of agreement between the town and the Hingham Library Staff Association. The agreement is for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. And the memorandum of agreement has been ratified and executed by the Union. We had two bargaining sessions and one follow-up to complete the negotiations. I'm just going to go through a summary of the major provisions of the agreement real quickly. It's a three-year contract. There was one equity adjustment for the Associate Library Position, L12. There was a general wage increase for the three years, 3% effective for each July 1, 2024, July 1, 2025, and July 1, 2026. The vacation increased to be in line with the personnel bylaws. And then there were also some increases in the sick leave buyback, longevity pay, and stipends. So that was kind of the, and we, it was a very collaborative process. We want to thank the whole bargaining team from the Union. They were a pleasure to work with. They were very fair and reasonable in negotiating this contract. I'd like to just kind of go over their, the bargaining team. It was Peter Thornell, Tati McGonigal, Joseph Maynard, Anne Finkenmore, Deb DiLiano, and Michael Ishiel. It was a pleasure to work with them. David, would you like to add anything?
No, I think that was excellent.
I think we should add a thanks, Courtney, to you and to David for the work you did. I know Tom participated as well, but you keep us on the straight and narrow and we appreciate it. And am I correct that the Union has agreed to these terms?
Yes, they've signed it. They've ratified it and signed the contract.
Okay. And are the terms of the contract consistent with the town's commitment of keeping increases at or below 3.5%?
Yes, it was under the 3.5% increase.
Thank you. Liz, any questions?
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you, Courtney and Dave. And thank you to the whole, the whole team and the library, the library staff, and certainly Linda Harper Stone. No questions. I was glad to see the equity adjustment and that the vacation is in line and consistent with the personnel bylaws. I know the sick leave buyback was a priority for them, so glad we were able to do that. Certainly, the library is a wonderful resource for the town. And so I'm glad to say this seems very fair and I think shows our commitment to them and how much we appreciate them. So thank you for all the work on this.
Absolutely. Tom, anything you want to add?
Nope, I'm great. Thank you.
Any member of the public, comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Library Staff Association, Local 888 SEIU AFLCIO, effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
Second, roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. It is approved. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to thank Tom and Art. I did not include them and Linda. So they were so, so nice to work with. Thank you.
Excellent. Good team up. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is probably one of the most difficult ones we have. And I say that with all humor because we're really pleased to welcome members of the Plymouth County. So we have the Plymouth County American Rescue Plan, ARPA, check presentation. And we have some representatives up here. If you wanted to go to the podium, I think it would be very appropriate. And introduce yourselves for the record, please.
At the check, we'll travel.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the Board. My name is Jared Valenzola, Plymouth County Commissioner and Chairman. And I'm joined this evening by County Treasurer Tom O'Brien to bring you folks a very small sum of $3,025,574. Sorry, you got worried that it was an actual small sum there. But wait a minute, there's a lot of zeros there. I do just want to extend the regrets to my colleagues, Commissioner Wright and Commissioner Hanley. They both had scheduling conflicts this evening. We're certainly really proud of this program. I know we've been in here a lot lately. I usually, when I'm with the Treasurer, I'll open some stuff up. He'll say something and then he'll fill in the blanks on what I forgot. But his office, in conjunction with our office, have really been able to execute this program at a 1.25% administrative cost, which has been the lowest in the nation, which has meant more money for Hingham, more money for the other member communities in Plymouth County. And of course, as we did CARES and pivoted into ARPA, I often like to say that we tried to bring some semblance of good news in what was a barrage of bad news surrounding this. The town has done a remarkable amount of work with Tom and the rest of your team, Michelle, everybody here in Hingham in executing these funds and using them. And I think one of the things that we emphasized, at least at the county level, we didn't tell anybody how to spend it. We gave guidelines and parameters based on the federal government's laws. But we really encouraged using it on things like water and sewer infrastructure, taking care of those major one-time projects that otherwise would have potentially hit your levy or had necessitated other funding sources that a lot of folks right now are having a hard time with. So we are, we're very grateful for the support of the town, very grateful for the support of Senator O'Connor and Representative Muschino, as well as Congressman Lynch, who has, when his schedule is permitted, been at some of these as well. So it's been a wonderful partnership at the state, federal, county, and local level. And I think for the viewers at home, a demonstration of how government can and should work. So I think I got everything, but fear not. If I forgot anything, Treasurer O'Brien will be sure to fill in the gaps.
So am I correct that this covers two projects? The Route 3A sewer project and the fire and emergency medical service?
Correct. You are 100% correct.
And I think you know that the town values the partnership we have with the county. We appreciate your being here. I wish you were here more often. But as often as you are coming, it's, the town's grateful.
Well, we appreciate that very much. And if I might just add a few quick thoughts. And then Commissioner Valenzola hit the highlights. You did an excellent job as always. But it gives us a chance, as we reflect on the program, to really announce a few things. One, the Commissioners designated a certain allocation to each of our 27 communities. Hingham was a real pleasure to work with. And I am pleased to report tonight that with this check, Hingham will have received 100% of its allocation. Not everyone around the country was able to do that. I'm also pleased to be able to report that Plymouth County was able to put out every penny of the money that we received through the American Rescue Plan Act. And I can tell you that not every governmental entity has been able to do that around the country. Even some states have some difficulty and have had to return monies. What we can report because of our administration of this program is that every penny went out to our communities and every penny is going to stay in our communities. We know there's going to be some audit work that's being done on the back end, but we feel confident in the program we set up with the robust auditing that we've done ahead of time, that the program was done exactly as it was envisioned and that there are going to be no challenges. As the Commissioner mentioned, my office are particularly proud of the fact that we kept administrative fees down. The average for this program around the country is 5% to 7%. And that's not unusual of a program of this size. We're finding even here in New England that it's about 3% to 5%. But as the Commissioner announced, it's going to be under 1.25% for the Plymouth County ARPA program. And what that meant was more money for our communities, more money for Hingham, more money for worthwhile projects like this. And what the Commissioner talked about is the envision of the American Rescue Plan Act was to focus on water sewer projects that wouldn't necessarily be done or needed some assistance. And I believe that Hingham did exactly what the federal government was expecting and partnering with us to do this sewer and water project, which is huge in the town, a lot of resources, but needed this supplemental funding. I also would point out that you were very quick to get access to some of the money early on to do the design work. And that's a credit to your team, to Tom and Michelle and the other folks in your office who said, hey, let's get to this. And I got to reminisce a little bit about when we started this program. One of my very first calls on my cell phone was from Tom Mayo. And he was very complimentary, thanked us for our work on the CARES program, but wanted to know how quickly he could access ARPA. And we said, well, Tom, as soon as you fill out the paperwork, we'll be able to do that. And then, how did you get my cell phone?
Tom's right.
But we've had a few morning calls. And I think Tom, he may or may not report this, but I always return this call if I wasn't there immediately accessible and really have valued this partnership, as Commissioner Valenzola said, and he does it so well. This doesn't work without that partnership at the different levels. And we couldn't have done it without the support from the top, but we need that strong support at this level. And our towns have been very kind to send in letters of appreciation and support for this program, first for CARES and now for ARPA. So it's just been a huge success. I'm excited to see about it. We just issued a press release announcing some of the things that I just mentioned about completing it on time, using every dollar, a low administrative fee. This may or may not surprise everyone in the room. It hasn't been picked up by any media yet. Maybe too good news, we don't know, but really something we're proud of. And this is just the type of program that the county can do. We look forward to continued partnership with the town of Hingham on a number of programs that we offer and just really believe that regionalization is a way to help our communities address some of their service needs. So thoroughly have enjoyed working with the town. I don't know, I'm sure there are some things that others may want to add. And then if you don't mind, we'd love a quick photo as proof we were here and proof we gave you the money.
Yeah, we intend to endorse the check, D.C.
It's in this folder that I'm carrying with me. I don't know whether to give it to Michelle or Tom. You'll have to tell me who to, Michelle. Michelle says she wants it. Let's get this on video.
Joe, can I just jump you up, please? Before you do the picture off? So Tom is right. We've had a number of phone calls along the way and they weren't always pleasant, probably for Tom, because I, people like me, I imagine, regularly want to use these funds for things that we need, not necessarily in line with the, with the intended purposes of these grants. But Tom had the hard job of making us all understand that this is what the money's for and this is what it can be used for. And he did it very politely and in a very organized fashion, matter-of-factly. So we pushed back appropriately where he had to. And as a result, we're in this place now where, where we're gonna, we have this, we receive these funds for these incredibly important projects. And we're not going to, we don't have to worry about the backend audit. And that's in large part because of the work you did, Tom. So thank you on behalf of Hingham for protecting us from ourselves, me in particular.
I will say, did love some of the ideas. Very, very creative. But thank you.
Michelle, did you want to add anything?
Just, it's really been a pleasure to work with the guys, the folks in your office. You two and Matt Hanley has been really, really a helpful resource. I think we've talked about all the different infrastructure and capital projects that we have in this town. And this money has really helped us advance some of those projects, some of the planning studies, and now making these major sewer investments in Route 3A. So thank you very much for your support and partnership in this.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure. And I'm glad you mentioned Matt in our office because he's been another front-facing member. And as Tom mentioned, we really got more calls than one could imagine. As many as, you know, 15 or 20 an hour, particularly early on in this program. And we were able to handle every one of them. So it doesn't work without a team. And the Commissioners always gave us the support we needed to make that happen.
That's why I had to get the cell phone.
Yeah.
Well, you've made it work for the town and we appreciate it. And we'll gladly now accept the check and get a picture.
Fantastic. Should we do that back here?
Sure.
Yeah.
Say, I like the mural.
Tommy, you're going to be in the picture, aren't you?
Yeah, very well traveled.
Michelle did 97.9% of the first. She's probably be in the picture.
I would agree with.
Maybe 99.7%.
Sir, you good? Almost wiped out her. He got the real check. Ready? On three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Perfect. Press now.
Good idea. Very good.
Good to see you.
Oh, it's great. Infrastructure.
Always good to see the cat.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda. Which proclaimed February 8th, 2025 as Lincoln Day in the Town of, sorry? I will repeat that. Next item on our agenda is proclaim February 8th, 2025 as Lincoln Day in the Town of Hingham. If you drive through Hingham, you can't help but see the Lincoln name throughout. And we often, not even limited to Lincoln Day, honor the Lincolns who have been in Hingham. And this year is no different. We have a proclamation that we will be reading. I believe it's this, this Saturday. And so we will read it this evening as well. Now I ask my fellow Select Board member to begin the proclamation.
Excellent. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Lincoln Day Proclamation. Whereas the Town of Hingham was settled in 1635 by a small band of Puritans, many of whom came from Hingham, England, and environs. And whereas among the descendants of those original settlers were two famous American public figures who shared the common family name Lincoln, as well as a common heritage. And whereas it is a longstanding Hingham tradition to honor and celebrate their birthdays. General Benjamin Lincoln, a lifelong Hingham citizen and a hero of the American Revolution, and Abraham Lincoln, our 16th president and the towering figure of the Civil War. And whereas we honor and celebrate the lives and deeds in all their complexity of the two Lincolns because of the incredible legacy of civic engagement and community building they have left for us.
And whereas in this year, 2025, we pay special honor to four centuries of our citizens. Those famous like Benjamin Lincoln and Abraham Lincoln, and those unknown to history who have worked in myriad ways to build and sustain this wonderful community of Hingham and the broader communities of state and nation. And whereas the preservation of community is a perpetual task in which each generation must fully participate. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby officially proclaim Saturday, February 8th, 2025 as Lincoln Day. And finally, we urge each citizen to take to heart the examples of the two Lincolns and those of four centuries of Hingham citizens. And we urge each citizen to participate in some concrete way in the strengthening and preservation of this community of Hingham and the broader communities of state and nation for the generations which will succeed us. Given under our hands and seal of Hingham, this fourth day of February 2025, signed by Joseph M. Fisher Chair, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein.
I will make a motion to proclaim Saturday, February 8th, 2025 as Lincoln Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second, roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next item on our agenda is a possible vote to approve the issuance and details of the bonds and notes of the town to be issued in February 2025 and sign related closing documents. Michelle, would you want to lead us off?
Sure. So typically, our Treasurer Lori Magna would be with us tonight, but she's unable to attend the meeting. We are joined by Alex Lucasio from Capital Markets Advisors, the town's financial advisors. And Kara Adams, our bond counsel, will hopefully be tuning in shortly. But I think as the Board knows, we had our bond and band sale last week. We issued $70 million in bonds to support the construction of the public safety facility and foster school projects. And those came in at a interest rate of 3.84%. And we also issued about $37 million in bond anticipation notes, also known as bands. And those came in much lower than expected at 2.76%, so we're very happy with those results. One thing that Capital Markets Advisors helps us do every year is look at what kind of money the town might have saved, or has saved having the AAA rating, the highest rating that's available to municipalities versus a double A rating. And this year, Alex helped us crunch those numbers. And it was about 1.25 million on the bonds and just under $50,000 on the bands. So we appreciate, we're lucky to maintain that high rating, have access to the market, and help us do some of these needed projects at the lowest interest rate possible. So what you have before you this evening in this packet is just a sample of the closing documents. I think I sent them over the weekend, but there's a whole stack about three inches thick in our office that have all been signed by our Assistant Treasurer Collector, again, prepared by Bond Counsel, and will help us, you know, close the deal in the coming days.
Tom, is there anything you'd like to add?
So this whole effort was spearheaded by Michelle. Obviously, she does this each year as we issue our bands. She does amazing work. The team at CMA is second to none. Very proud to work with them and the results we get every year are terrific. They save the town and the taxpayers significant money. So great job to the whole team.
And Michelle, do we have, is Bond Castle on?
It does not look like she has joined us at this point.
I don't see a reason why we need her unless you'd like us to hold off.
No, I don't think so. It was just in case you had questions.
Okay, I have reviewed the documents. I participated in the ratings calls. And I, I'm really proud of the work that the town has done in securing the financing at this, these interest rates. And Michelle and Tom, you both really were instrumental in this one. So, so thank you. Liz?
Yes, I've reviewed the packet as well. Thank you to Tom and Michelle and the team. Thank you, Alex, for being here. I'm thrilled to see that the rates were even better than what we had forecasted. So that's good news. And I appreciate you putting the information together. We often get asked, how important is AAA bond rating and what does that mean to the town? And it really is significant dollars to the taxpayer. So thank you for highlighting that tonight. It's important for people in the public to know.
Yes. Okay. Are there any questions, members of the public? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion. And I see there are several motions we're going to do. So Liz, I'm going to ask if you do. You and I can alternate if you want. You can begin with the first one?
Sure. Okay, I will make a motion. We hereby determine in accordance with General Law, Chapter 70B, that the cost of the, I, foster elementary school construction project authorized by votes of the town passed on April 24th, 2017, Article 20, and November 1st, 2022, Article 1, being financed with proceeds of a portion of the bonds and notes defined below. And two, Plymouth River School Remodeling Project authorized by a vote of the town passed on April 30th, 2022, Article 14, being financed with proceeds of a portion of the notes defined below. Together with all other bonds and notes of the town previously issued to pay costs of this project, does not exceed the portion of the total cost of the project that is not being paid by the school facilities grant. And we hereby approve the issuance of notes and bonds to finance this project under General Law, Chapter 70B.
I will second that motion. Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. I make a motion that the sale of the $68,320,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2025 bonds of the town dated February 13th, 2025, the bonds, to Mezaro Financial, Inc., at the price of $70,264,575.60 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on February 1st of the year and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as shown. So a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
I will make a motion to approve the sale of. I will make a motion to approve the sale of a $37,661,683 4% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated February 13th, 2025 and payable February 13th, 2026, the note, to JP Morgan Securities LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $465,872.
Second, roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. I move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 16th, 2025, and a final official statement dated January 28th, 2025, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
I will make a motion that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 16th, 2025, and a final official statement dated January 28th, 2025, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
Second, roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. I move that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
I'll make a motion that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events, disclosure undertakings in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time.
Second, roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. I move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient. Or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and notes and to comply with relevant securities laws.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
I'll make a motion that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds and the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures.
Second, roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. And I move that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. These are all approved. Thank you. And thank you all for bearing with us. Next item on our agenda is a discussion and possible vote to modify the current plan for the Hewitts Cove mooring field, which is adjacent to the Hingham shipyard. We have Joe Driscoll here. If you don't mind coming up here. And do we have anyone from the MBTA on the Zoom?
I think Alan is with the MBTA. And Tess.
Oh, there he is.
Come back.
Okay. So Joe, do you want to just give us briefly the background on this?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So basically, the RMS's office has numerous mooring plans throughout the harbor to help us manage the vessel placement of vessels on moorings. One of those mooring plans is the Hewitts Cove mooring area. And what we're looking to do is get authorization to implement a modified plan for that area because of the MBTA ferry terminal project that is going to be changing the configuration of the docks where they're going to kind of come into that mooring field. So the modified plan is going to move three of those moorings from the southern end where those docks would interfere with them to the northern end. And then two of the other moorings that are just adjacent to those ones are going to go from 35-foot moorings to three 25-foot moorings to allow for additional room from that dock space. And if you need more detail, we have the charts that we provided of the new one. Those moorings that are going to move are the 808, 809, and 813. They're going to remain the same size since we moved up to the northern end of the field. And then 821 and 820 are the ones that are going to change from 235s to 325s. And I did give an updated chart with the actual colors for those moorings. Just the previous one I submitted, they're just black. So just to make it more clear that those three that are moving are going to remain the same size. And then the ones down south, the 820, 821, and then we're going to call the third one 886, because we had to add an additional number. Because that's going from two moorings to three.
And have you had discussions with any members of the public or voters or other users concerning these changes?
I'm not sure if members of the public were helped about this. I know that our master course had been talking with MBTA and the shipyard regarding, shipyard marina, rather.
Right.
Regarding these changes to kind of facilitate the ability to have the docks and not lose those moorings.
Yes. And I believe we have Tess who's on the line from the MBTA. Is there anything that you wanted to add?
Hi, everyone. Sure, my name's Tess Paganelli. I'm the Director of Environmental Permitting and Review at the T. I would just add that we have been going through a few public processes through our environmental permitting. So we did do a public meeting when we went through NEPA as well as for our Conservation Commission permit. So we didn't have the specific layout of how the moorings would shift, but we did know that we would be impacting moorings at that time. So there has been some engagement on that level.
And this is a question probably for both of you. To what extent have you looked at concerns about either depth or concerns about obstructions in the harbor?
I guess I can answer that.
Sure.
So there was a survey done by the MBTA for the depth. And that does look like there's sufficient water depth for those sized vessels in that area, especially compared to where they were prior. As for the swing radiuses, they'll be outside of the navigable channel. So they shouldn't affect the vessel traffic from the channel itself.
Right. And is the MBTA satisfied in terms of making sure that we're not interfering with the ferry or that it actually will help as the ferry work is continuing?
Yes, it will help. And we've made sure to verify too with DCR, who also operates in that area. So this also maintains their 100-foot freeway so they can operate into business.
Thank you. Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you, Joe, for your help on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Joe. Could you just point out the three that you were talking about?
Yes. So the three, shall scroll up. So it's 808, 809, and 813 down there with the dock. You can see them. Those are the ones that are moving up to the north. But you'll see those, the red and two blue. We still don't have numbers next to them.
Okay.
Those are where they're being relocated to.
Okay. Okay, and so what, Tom, maybe you know this. What is the required public process or public notice?
This process?
Okay.
It's really just that those three moorings would have been in the way of the new dock. So instead of, what we can't do is negatively impact any individual's rights. And by simply moving the moorings, we've not done that. They still have access rights to these moorings.
Okay. And do people, are those assigned to people currently, those moorings? Or those the transient moorings?
No, those are ones that are assigned seasonally.
Okay. And have those, have we notified the people that generally have those?
I'm not sure if those people have been notified that they could potentially be relocating. We are in our permitting renewal.
Opened up, right? The renewals for?
Yes. So until the end of February, people are renewing. Potentially, those people might not renew or they could renew.
Okay. Okay, so it's a similar depth. Is there any risk of, I mean, it looks like it's further out, right? So is it like more exposure to, like not as secure or?
That area is typically affected very similarly by any environmentals.
Okay. Okay. No other questions?
Any member of the public comments or questions? Seeing none, I think I'm going to make this motion. I move that in accordance with the Town of Hingham General Law, Article 15, Section 3, and the Town of Hingham mooring regulations adopted thereunder, and all other applicable laws and regulations, the harbor master is hereby authorized to adopt a revised mooring plan for the Back River mooring area substantially in accordance with a plan entitled Vessel Access Plan, Hingham Ferry Dock Modification Plan, C15, project number 2200343, which plan is on file with the Town of Hingham Select Board's office, subject to such minor adjustments as may be deemed necessary by the harbor master to address safety, depth, or obstruction concerns that he may identify.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
And I'm as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tess. Good job.
So next item on our agenda is going to be departmental budget requests. And the first one coming up, wearing a Speedo bathing suit, will be the Bathing Beach trustees. Do we have Ed Johnson here?
Evening, our benchman.
Okay.
We have all our Hingham people over there at the Clonel Pool in Wemba.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm Ed Johnson. I'm one of the three trustees of the Bathing Beach with Alan Perrow and Adrian Ramsey. I'm presenting the budget tonight for the Bathing Beach. We're asking for a whopping 2.3% increase in our budget, which is personnel costs. No other cost other than the regular expenses. For the lifeguards, we try to have four lifeguards on duty on all times. Beach operation is three hours before and after high tide. So we're a tidal beach operation. We're requesting in our budget for wages for $31,202. The wages make up roughly 78% of the budget. So that's the most, highest part of our budget. We try to have four lifeguards on duty at all times to make for the coverage. Even though we operate just where the swim lines are located, our lifeguards do watch down by the boat ramp in case there's any trouble with the boats and the people going. We have no control on the people going in the water down there. But we do have the lifeguards keep an eye down there. The building, the ground operation, the DPW does an extra job down there cutting the grass and keeping the trash. The biggest problem still is the bridge getting into the trash buckets, pulling out the trash. Even though we have different type buckets through the year, they're very good at getting into the trash and pulling out irons. And that's probably the biggest problem, which we don't have a lot of control over. We haven't used that goose management down there spring. And it does help a little, but wherever there's food, there's going to be birds. So we'll always go have that problem. The building grounds, we're requesting $60,000 for the management, for the goose management. And for also to be used for sand renourishment. With the northeast storms, there's always the sand, it's always moving down towards the boat ramp. And it's a situation every year. The DPW has to get some of that sand out from the boat ramp, bring it back up to the beach. There's some work that has to be done on there where the sea grass is located. The storms at times do a job there. It's just repair work. It's not major work that has to be done. The utilities, $500, that's for the old bathhouse. We still keep the old bathhouse open for the lifeguards to use. We don't keep that open for the general public, though. Utilities, $5,000. The water's $3,000. The shower that's down by the new bathhouse is excellent. The people rave about it. We improve it. We bought a new, more heavy-duty type shower to handle the usage down there. Custody surprise, $800 for keep up for the old bathhouse. Young Farms is $1,200 for the lifeguards bathing suits with the t-shirts, sweatshirts, and for the hats. Tow expenses is $8,800. Tow personnel costs is $31,202, but tow expenses are $40,002, a 2.3% increase.
Thank you. I will say that even though your budget is not the largest in town, it is an organization that is highly visible. And one of the keynotes of Hingham is the bathing beach. Having you as the custodians there is very important. We appreciate your work there. One thing that I've raised in the past is whether or not we can have a dispenser of some sort for skin protection, you know, from the sun. Whether, I don't know, I've been to other public bathing beaches where there's a pump.
Yeah.
You can get some protection.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's something you explored or would be considering to.
Yeah, there has been one inside the old bathhouse. We don't keep it up in the beach itself.
Okay.
We can put them out there if that's something you would like to see out there.
I just think as sun safety continues to be an important issue, I'd like trustees to consider that.
Okay.
That'd be great.
I'll bring up on this.
Ed, let's talk. I think Susan Sarni might be able to help with some grants to help pay for that.
Okay, good.
She gets a lot of sunscreen-related grant money.
Yeah, and the passion has gotten for us.
Liz?
Excellent. Well, thank you, Ed, and thank you to the other trustees. As Joe mentioned, this is certainly a valuable resource for Hingham, so appreciate it. The budget looks fine. I just wanted to ask about the four lifeguards. Do you think that's enough coverage? Do you feel comfortable with that?
I do. Well, especially on the weekends, during the week, you know, for us. But on the weekends, it's a busy days down there. And at times on Sundays, there's no parking in the parking lot.
Yeah.
It's completely full. And I know some people go over the harbor master's parking lot. I know the harbor master doesn't like that, but we have no control over that.
Sure.
And it's just people looking for available parking. We do, people go, ask people to go down. We do, people go, ask people to go down Station Street to walk and you have to cross, you know, at the traffic lights. It becomes a real safety issue with people crossing there.
Right. Okay. Well, glad to see, hopefully you'll be fully staffed for this summer. And I know that the new outdoor shower was certainly a nice service to be able to add. I know the geese continue to be a problem, so thank you for staying on top of that. And if there are other resources that you need, please let us know.
And DPW does an action job down there with cutting the grass and the bushes.
Wonderful.
Down there.
Good, thank you.
Joe, can I just add something?
Just one more thing too. If you do run short of lifeguards, I'm a retired lifeguard. Give me a call.
I've been doing it for seven years and I just got my red cross card again.
Okay. Okay.
I just wanted to point out, so yes, that outdoor shower is fantastic. It's a great resource. People love it, except so do the geese. The freshwater source attracts them. They smell it from miles away and they come and land there and do their business all over that brick. We have the DPW down there regularly cleaning it. My office did augment some geese control measures with some dogs last year. We've discontinued it over the winter, but we'll start that up again this spring. You know, Ed and his team do their best with their budget to control the geese. We're going to augment that and we have to. It's just, it makes that area unusable when that many geese get to it. So we're working hard at it, but it's a, it's an uphill battle.
Yeah.
So just want the public to be aware of that.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good night.
We will now move on to the sewer budget. Mr. Russell Tierney. How are you, Russ?
How is everybody tonight?
Good.
Thanks for the check. Now we'll spend it for you. No problem at all. Real quick on that, we got the waiver for winter work, so we're going to have to start earlier than anticipated on the D3 project.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we got that this morning or yesterday came in. Anyways, here to talk about the budget for the sewer department. As you know, we're switching to contract operations. At this time, there'll be no increase in the sewer rates. We reviewed everything in the past couple of months and do not see an increase in sewer rates. Total revenue for the sewer department, I went based on a three-year average, was about $3.9 million. Our total expenses as of right now were $3.73 million, but that doesn't include capital yet, so we'll wait for capital next week and add that in. But that does give us 13% up to that revenue line. So we should have enough room in there to do the capital work we want to do. Our salaries, if you look at the budget, have been reduced by 9% because we're moving a portion of the Hingham Sewer Commission for Superintendent. However, the personnel service is reduced by 56% because we're moving to contract operations, which then turn around increased the total expenses by 75% in the expense line. So everything balanced out. We went through this when we talked about the contract ops. It all balanced out to keep the budget pretty much flatlined this year. Long-term debt is about $10,000 for the principal on the sewer INI, about $4,700 on the interest for debt services in the sewer INI, about $19,000 in principal for mains and piping, and about $8,300 a year in means, in interest and mains and piping, sorry. The HOA Interadministrative Agreement, there's a 3% increase this year, which we did put in today, which again left the budget, it was fine. But the MWRA is going to a 2% decrease. We got word yesterday from them that they're going to go down 2%, which saves us, which puts it at about $2.3 million a year for the MWRA. Capital budget, it's based on a break, you know, break history and things like that of the plant. I did sit down with Steve on a number of occasions and we made a, actually put together a five-year plan, Steve and I, starting with this year. We recommended to the Sewer Commission that we develop a master plan, which we're going to talk about over the next year, maybe hiring a consultant to develop a master plan for the sewer system. We did, like I said, develop a capital, five-year capital plan, which averages about $1.4 million per year in capital work. What's included in this is for FY '26 is about $1.5 million that we're going to propose. It has to do with some pump station capital, which includes upgrades to skater and some of the pumps, a force main replacement at Malcolm Street. The Waver River Water System, we've been doing manhole rehab, which we'll continue to do next year. And we want to replace the flow meters. We're going to focus on the North Sewer District. One of the things we were noticing was some of the meters are broken and we use a method to calculate the flow. We'd like to get a better idea exactly what that flow is so that we can see what's coming out of our main pump stations going straight to the MWRA so we can match up with what they're charging us a little better than we do now. So it's a big thing and we actually talked to Weston and Sampson. And because the force main project came in under budget, we actually might add a change order to the force main project to do a meter for Broad Cove. That'll then leave us the money we had set aside for meters for the other smaller pump stations this year instead of waiting a couple of years for it. So we're going to progress on that right now. We're going to look at it. And then our annual capital items for main repairs, service repairs. We're going to put a power monitoring system, which will let us know if we're starting to have pump issues earlier than normal. What it does, it monitors the amperage getting pulled by the pumps. If we notice the amperage going up, it means sometimes the pump is either failing or going to fail. So now we can get ahead of the game instead of watching, letting it fail and ask how it's going to come out of emergencies. And the annual II is going to continue. And again, new flow meters are in our capital items, so we're going to put new flow meters in all the pump stations over the next five years. That's one of our capital items. And that is it. Any questions?
Well, thank you for your leadership here. Looking at the budget, why is the uniform allowance doubled?
Because that could be a mistake on my part, Joe. It shouldn't be, it should be gone. No, it should be gone. Are we looking at the right line?
Am I looking at the right one?
Where is it?
Going basically from $4,000 to $8,000? Are we getting new uniforms?
I can't.
What is happening here?
It might be a mistake. I will double check that, Joe, but it's definitely not because we should have reduced it. And it was in my original spreadsheet, it's reduced. I did, and this is not a excuse, I did have a little trouble. Michelle and I were having trouble with this updating every time we updated it. So it may not have updated before I printed, but I will double check.
And am I correct that sewers operated as an enterprise fund to the extent that revenues come in, pay for the expenses?
Yeah, but it's not a true enterprise fund. But it's based on the rate payers, the rate payers, correct?
It's the rate payers
Yep.
are responsible for meeting the costs. So unlike the other departments we're looking at, this is not something that goes directly to the taxpayers.
Correct. And that is a mistake, Joe. I'll correct that.
Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Russ, and thank you for your leadership on this. I know we've talked about this budget and certainly the operations quite a bit. Can you just talk a little bit about, I know you mentioned that the rates are not going up. Have you done like a five-year rate study or?
No, that's, that's part of the capital plan. I think we should do a capital plan like we did similar to the water system.
Yes.
What it'll do is let us know, you know, where we're headed, how we're headed. I did ask Weston and Sampson to resend us some of the II reports. I want to dig a little deeper into those to see where we're staying with II. Because everyone knows that, you know, infiltration inflow, when we send it to MWRA, we're paying for them to pump water over to Deer Island that probably is just water. It's not sewage. So the II is very important. Again, the flow meters will help us, just like we do on the other side, narrow it down to where our problem areas are. And then we also talked with the commission about going forward, if some of these private developments don't want to comply with the II, maybe we look at, you know, we got to punish, I say, you know, spill them for extra because we have to pay extra the MWRA. Because everyone knows that the MWRA rate goes up if we have a spike and we don't want to see that spike because that spike really hurts our budget. So we like to keep things steady with the flows that they don't hit us with the surcharge.
Right, okay. So will you be working with the Sewer Commission on the capital plan?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. No other questions?
We have a representative of the Sewer Commission here if you wanted to add anything.
Yeah.
You can actually, those microphones are live right there.
This one?
Yes.
Yeah, Clark Frazier, Fifty Mine Briers Circle. I want to thank the town and Plymouth County for their check. And we're getting a big chunk of it to replace the force main. And we were promised, I hope, not to keep having to dig holes in 3A every two years. We do have to work on the capital budget. And that's something that we've known. And I warn you that we are vulnerable to weather events. We had some problems last year and I'm not sure we've seen a Malcolm Street with seawater getting in the system. So we need to take a look at the longer term, beyond five years, and have a strategic plan. It's my opinion, but I can't prove it, that we have too many pump stations. So maybe in some cases we have to change technology. And that may be a little expensive at the beginning, but we may be able to. And we're, I think we're behind on II. I looked at the reports and I can't be sure, but it looks like we've only done 15% of the estimated work. But that probably is pessimistic. We need to do more work because that peak flow, which is, I think your chart shows three to one, is what is driving up our MWRA rate.
Yep.
If we can bring that rate down, it does two things. It lowers our costs, we can do more work to fix the system. And the second thing is that we'll have more capacity, particularly in the shipyard area for development, should the town choose to do it. So I would compliment Russ and Steve on the excellent job that they're doing. And that I think hopefully we'll in the next couple of years get real control of the capital budget and our resiliency issues about sea level. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, and thank you for your work. Okay, now move on to accounting.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you? So Ann has had her head down working on payroll and training new staff, so I'm going to help her out with the next two budgets.
Okay.
Great. So I think you guys are familiar with the accounting department and the vital function that they play as part of our finance, financial team in town and keeping everything going in terms of paying all of our bills, paying all of our people every week, completing needed state, federal, and other reporting, helping us work on the budget every year, overseeing the audit process, et cetera. I'm just going to skip down to the bottom. Ann has been overseeing a transition the last year. She is the new town accountant. We have a new accounts payable person and a brand-new payroll person. So she's spending a lot of time with them trying to build some of the institutional knowledge and also improve the processes we have in the office to move away from some of our paper-based processes and kind of expand our, the options that we're using in the unit. So I thank her for that. Most of her budget is basically being held the same. There's some staff increases for new folks. A portion of the SRECC reimbursement to the town goes to the accounting office like it does to the town hall maintenance team for the services that they provide to our regional 911 dispatch center. Besides that, on expenses, they're largely the same. We just, I decreased a little bit in the office supplies to be able to bump up the other contracted services. We've done some extra training and had some extra supports in place over the last year, again, just to assist with the transition. And then the other big piece in the accounting budget is the town audit. This is budgeted here every year, so that's the last line item you see. And we have a three-year contract with CLA, so that reflects the numbers for the year ended FY '25 that they'll be working on next fall in '26. But overall, with all those kind of changes and moving parts, you're looking at about a 1.2% increase there due to some of the staff transition.
And anything you would like to add?
We did, you know, some of the office supplies that we don't have to buy so many file folders and things like that because we're doing electronic filing and things like that. So we are making efficiencies that are showing some cost.
How are we in terms of our software? And making sure that we're staying up to speed in terms of latest regulations so that we can comply with online downloads that happen immediately rather than having us to find and search what's the latest update? Are we, are we, are you comfortable that we have the systems in place this day and compliance?
I, yes, we do. Our unit system, I mean, this year they updated our federal tax tables for us. They don't usually do that. We usually have to do it ourselves.
That's why, exactly.
So they are making improvements. They don't do the state for us, but you know, there's things like that. They're definitely staying on top. And the system is very open-ended so that you're really able to maneuver the system the way that you need to have it. It's very open-ended.
And I'd say the other thing is that Ann and Axan are both active in the MMAA, like the State Association for Accountants and Auditors. So they've been attending the annual trainings and that's a good form also for kind of staying up to date with the latest regulation changes.
Great.
Liz, any questions?
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you, Ann, and to your team for everything you're doing. Just a question about SRECC, the reimbursement. Have we had that in the past or is that new this year?
We have had it in the past. It's just in the last two years in FY '25 and '26, we adjusted it upwards because it hadn't been looked at in a long time.
Okay.
So you see it as a higher amount in '26.
Okay, is it taking more of Ann's time?
That's, yeah, that's also a savings because normally it wouldn't be a negative 8.6%. That's because we have had turnover and all the people that we have are at the bottom of their.
Pay scale.
Pay scale. So that's, that's why that's such a decrease.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. No other questions?
Okay, so we can move on to contributory retirement.
That is from a pension liability schedule that we adopt.
Before you go on, can you just get a little closer to the mic?
Yeah. So that is from a pension schedule for, we are supposed to be fully funded by 2035. And the retirement board votes on that schedule every year.
So Ann is a member of our five-year retire, or five-member retirement board, and she oversees the retirement administrator, is a member of her office as well.
Is there a separate audit that's done on the retirement plan?
It's not.
Is that part of the town audit?
It's not an audit, like you mean like the actuarial study that we do? So every two years, that's updated through the retirement board and KMS are our actuary teams. So they look at both the pension liability and the OPEB, like the health insurance for retirees, liability and update those schedules. The pension liability, as Ann mentioned, there's a state requirement that we have to be fully funded by 2040, and I think we're on track to be fully funded by 2035. There's not a similar requirement for OPEB.
Okay, great. No other questions? Liz?
So this is according to the same schedule that we've seen, right? The retirement board hasn't made any significant changes.
Nothing significant, no.
Okay. Okay, no other questions?
And we'll move on to group insurance and OPEB. So if you can even define for the audience, OPEB.
So this budget group insurance really has two pieces of it. Health insurance for the current employees and retirees. And then OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits. And that's basically the budget for health, the health insurance for future retirees. So kind of our liability for health insurance in the future. For health insurance, we're part of the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission. And there's eight different plans offered there. Let me just scroll down to the bottom. So right now, these budgets, at least for health insurance, is kind of a placeholder. Typically, at this point in the process, we budget 10% over the last year's budget. The GIC tends to vote their rates in late February or the very first days of March. And then we'll get a sense of, we'll kind of take everyone who's on their current plans now, we'll put them in the new rates and then see where the budget comes out. When we were at the MMA conference a week or so ago, we stopped by their booth and they kind of told Tom and I they were looking at maybe eight or nine percent increases. But it depends, there's eight different plans. So we'll have to see how those numbers shake out. And then for OPEB, like we just mentioned, that's part of, that's the second actuarial study that we do. Ann works again with our actuaries there from KMS. And that's according to a schedule that is a little bit more rolling than pension because there's no state requirement when that should be fully funded.
Ann, anything you want to add?
No, not really.
Liz, any questions?
No questions on that right now. We'll get more information in a couple of weeks.
Okay, then we move on to Medicare.
Medicare. This is also a placeholder for now. We've just done 10% over the FY '25 amount. This is about, it's a certain, you know, it's 1.45% times kind of your gross personnel cost. So once we get closer to knowing what the final budget will be, we'll take all of the personnel wages from the school, from the municipal budgets and other places and make sure that we update that number to reflect the workforce for FY '26.
So each year we do basically the 10% approximation?
At this point in the process, yes. And then we will update it. And this is basically the employer's share of the Medicaid. And this is basically the employer's share of the Medicaid, the Medicare taxes.
So in prior years when we've done the 10%, and then we recalculate it, how close are we? How close is that 10%?
Let me just scroll up.
I'm just.
It looks like.
Are we over or under?
If you look at the last 10 years, there's been a few years where it's like, it's been a little bit under. And some of that, that would be the red. Some of that could have been, you know, different hires that happened during the year if they come in higher than expected or just personnel changes. But it looks like overall we've been fairly close.
Okay.
And all of these budgets that we're talking about right now are part of like the shared services category, which these are all related to municipal and school people.
Yes. Liz, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, we move forward to unemployment.
Unemployment, these next two might be, I think they're a little bit more in Anne's wheelhouse than mine. But unemployment, this is for unemployment compensation that the town is responsible for, for eligible employees. And this is a budget that has kind of been steady for many years. You can see up here, this is much harder to predict on these next two, unemployment and workers' compensation. So this is typically something that you'll see a reserve fund transfer for at the end of the year, depending on the situation. I know that during COVID, there was a number of fraudulent claims that many towns faced, and we were kind of fighting those off. My sense is that that has died down. But that is something that Anne and her team is always looking out for and verifying the claims that do come in.
So am I correct that in terms of unemployment, we self-insure?
Yes.
Anne, do you want to add anything?
Well, right now we're at 104,228 in expenses, which is just six months of the year. In '24, we spent 123,624. In '23, we spent 127,000. We average about, normally, 10, right between 10,000 a year, 10,000 a month. So we're averaging 120,000 a year for our unemployment. Right now, we spiked, so we're averaging for these past six months, 17,000 a month. So our expenses increased. And it's mostly due for July and August when they had layoffs at the school. It's like our cost for our unemployment.
So what is our projection for next fiscal year?
It's the same 40,000 that we've had for a long, I think it's, I think it used to be 30,000. We bumped it up by 10,000 last year, but.
That number doesn't.
May need to be adjusted. Yeah.
Okay, so that, how is it to be increased?
Similar to the legal budget, it's very difficult to anticipate what that number is really going to be. We've kept it low and we use a reserve fund transfer process to true it up at the end of each fiscal year. It's going to be hard to true it up in a time when we're cutting other places. That's the problem with this year, but you can do that if that's what you all want to do.
Isn't that the reason we should budget it at a higher amount?
If we budget, if we budget this at a higher amount now, it will take from something else that we would budget.
Yeah, but that may be a reflection of reality. So we need to make sure that we.
Yep.
Appropriately.
Agreed.
Liz, anything else?
Nope, not on that one.
Okay, then we will move to, we did workers, workers' comp.
This is another budget that is managed by Anne and her team. And it's related to injury, on-the-job injuries and compensating folks while they're out during that time. Go down here. Another one that's, if I go up here, sorry. Also kind of difficult to predict. You can see that some years we're closer and it kind of depends what's going on in any given year.
Right.
This is something else that we're self-insured for, with the exception of police and fire. There's a particular injured-on-duty policy that we have that helps cover some of those expenses.
So for this and others where we do a 0% over the prior year, it would seem prudent at least to do some sort of cost delivery increase associated with prior year. Given that there is inflation year to year. So I, I'd like to see something greater than 0% increase in our budget. Liz, any questions?
Do we know what the actual is so far for this year?
This is for the current fiscal year?
Yeah.
So already, what's budgeting, okay.
We have three permanent total disability.
If you can get closer to the mic.
We have three permanent total disability people that are in disability and four temporary total disability. So we have seven people that we're covering right now. And usually when one falls off, another one comes on. It's kind of like, hasn't been any drastic changes there at all.
Yep. Okay, no other questions? Anne?
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been saying for public safety. We move to public safety utilities, Mr. Mayo.
So this is a new budget for us. This is a, this is a, what we've done is we've added the public, no. This is the utilities, not the public safety building.
We added it into there.
Budget.
Yeah.
So what?
So the first two components of it, the lighting and the emergency water, are the annual budgets for emergency utilities or public safety utilities. This is the water that's in the, in the system for use by the fire department and the street lighting. It's those, it's the budget for those two items. To that, this year we've added the cost of the public safety facility, the operations cost of the public safety facility. So that's utilities and maintenance. Utilities are projected at about $100,000 and maintenance at $20,000.
This is the utilities associated with the public safety facility?
And maintenance.
And maintenance.
Yes.
And then we have lighting.
So lighting is the streetlights in town. The first two components, the emergency water is the water that's currently in the system for firefighting and lighting is the streetlights in town.
Got it.
And I know it looks all kind of lumped together in here. We have to work with ClearGo behind the scenes to get it so you can kind of see the three pieces more delineated, where we can have a public safety facility and a cost center. It shows up in MUNIS better than it does in ClearGo, but we can work on having that be displayed more clearly.
I guess I'm, so we, at the public safety facility, we have police headquarters and basically the New North Station.
Yes.
And this is, this includes the utilities and maintenance for that facility.
That section, the public safety facility section of that, that's right.
In other words, just the police side?
Nope.
Or is it police and fire?
Police and fire.
So what about the other fire departments? Are they included?
They're not included. They're under the fire department budget.
So I'm.
They're fire, they're fire.
I don't really understand this budget.
So I don't understand. So why do we have one station in this and not all the stations or why?
Because their public safety is police and fire. I couldn't separate out the utilities from one half of the building to another half. So it's public safety, so we put it in the public safety utilities.
It would seem at least part of it belongs in the fire departments.
How do I do that?
I don't know how you can separately meter or you can do.
But they're not metered that way. So the intent was to just put it all under public safety. It's all being paid.
By who?
By this budget.
Just kind of like town hall, how town halls, you know, a number of departments, but there's just, in the town hall budget, there's electric, water sewer for the whole building, the whole facility.
So it includes the school department?
Includes police, schools, Center for Active Living, REC, all of our departments. But you kind of centralize, there's not separate meters or budget for every department there. It's one, it's kind of per facility.
Yeah, but this sort of change looks like it's, we're changing the fire department budget, if you will, by pulling out one station and saying it's no longer part of their budget. So when we look at their budget, we're going to need to adjust it in some way so we can recognize if there's an increase or not.
So the fire station will, North Fire Station is still in the fire department budget because that building still needs to be operated.
Right.
It'll be turned on, people will be in there.
Sure.
This station, there's no way to meter out between the police use versus the fire use. So what we're doing is putting it all into one public safety utility budget because it's a public safety building. It was a combined police and fire operation.
Well, I understand that, but in terms of budgeting, if we are going to have separate budgets for fire and police, we need to figure out an approximate way to do that measurement. Otherwise, we have.
We can work on how you want us to show it. Show it however you think we should. Right now, it's not intended to be metered in any different way. So it would be a, maybe a proration of square footage of usage or something, but it's going to be messy.
Well, theoretically, the police department should come out of the town hall budget.
The police, that, that, the.
Police utilities, when they move.
But there's no separate meter for the police department. There's just meters for the town hall in general. So there's, it's not like there's, we don't charge like portions of all the utilities to each department that's here. It's for the building. I mean, we certainly could stick this in either the police or the fire budget, but we figured it's a new facility. It's going to have its own systems. There's only going to be one set of bills that come in for all this stuff. So it makes sense to put it in one place. And we could have, right now, we're having Chief Jones be in charge of paying for those and managing this. But we could put it kind of in either place. Where we already had a public safety utility department, it seemed to make sense to kind of make it a cost center under there. But we could also make it a totally separate department, just call it Public Safety Facility if that's more clear. I also think in 20, in FY '27, we'll have a lot more clarity. Right now, this is a very rough estimate from the OPM team in terms of like per square foot. This is what you would expect for the utility costs. Once you, once we're in the building and you go through a cycle, we'll have concrete, electric, water sewer, you know, alarm system, other bills that we can really itemize in a better way.
So the first item listed here, which is the emergency water, in my, that, that's not something that's limited to the public safety facility?
No.
Not, not the facility, it's public safety related, which is why we kind of grouped it all together.
Where, where is that budget line item usually typically?
Always in this line, in this budget. All we did was add the public safety facility because we didn't know where else to put it.
Oh, okay.
And it's all, I know this sounds silly, there's a whole manual called UMass, that guide that tell you what numbers you can use for departments for all these items. So every town's police department is number two, whatever it is. And so this one is already Department 299 for other public safety. That seemed to be like where it fit. So we just have to, you know, kind of fit it into those parameters too, but, which is why we stuck it here.
Right, that's right. But we can put it where you guys want us to put it. We didn't know where else to put it.
No, no, we're just trying to, it's, it's not only where it belongs, but as we track budgets year to year, it, this at least means it makes it more of a challenge.
So remember the police utilities were never in the police budget.
I understand, but the fire was.
Fire was.
So this is where. Right.
Fire will continue to be if that, if that building's open.
Right.
For storage or for.
Yes, we need to discuss that as well.
Okay, anything else on this? Liz?
Nope, no other questions on that right now.
Good. Then we can move to a joint session with the school committee and the advisory committee.
Advisory committee. Take a brief recess.
Yes, we will take a recess for five minutes. And I get to bang the guy.
Recording stopped.
We are now resuming the meeting of the select board, and I am pleased to announce that we are joined by the school committee and the advisory committee. So I'll begin asking the school committee, if you have not already come to order, to call your meeting to order.
I will call the school committee meeting to order, the February 4th, 2025, school committee meeting to order and adopt the language indicated by this chair at the start of the meeting. Just for purposes of tonight's meeting, I am here in person, myself, Ness Corenti, Jen Benham, Tim Miller-Demsey, Carrie Nie, Ally Anderson, also joined online by Michelle Eyre and Matt Cosner.
Thank you. And I'll ask the advisory committee to call its meeting to order.
We're recessed and we are just calling our meeting back to order in the same language.
Thank you. So we will begin with the preliminary fiscal year '26 financial forecast update. And we have Tom Mayo and Michelle Montziger to begin that discussion.
Thank you, Joe. So as we previewed this afternoon with the forecast group, we've only made one change since the original draft of the forecast that everyone saw a few weeks ago. We added the governor's budget that she announced at the MMA conference about a week and a half ago. So just kind of staying at the high level, that budget, the, her proposal helped us close the gap a bit. So right now, we are looking at about a $528,000 budget gap for FY '26. Her, the state's budget goes through a number of iterations. So we'll have to see what the House and Senate do and what the conference committee comes up with. But we, it's, it's the one update that we have at the moment. The additional information that we're going to get in the coming weeks relates to the motor vehicle excise tax, to the GIC, the new health insurance rates that are typically announced at the very end of February, the very beginning of March. And we'll do some additional analysis on local receipts. In addition, we had our bond and band sale last week. So we'll be able to update the debt service schedule and put those figures in as well. So we'll have more information next time, but we thought we'll just do a quick forecast update tonight.
Tom, anything you wanted to add?
Nope. Good job, Michelle.
I always ask Tom and he has this pause and then he said, nope, nothing. Okay, so begin with questions and I will start with the advisory committee. If you have any questions on the forecast.
No, I was great because we were pleased to see.
We unmute.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Apologies. We were pleased to see the deficit has come down even more and we look forward to the next forecast update. Thank you.
Liz, I neglected to ask if you had any questions.
That's fine, I don't have any questions on the forecast. It's promising to see the numbers are better than we expected or a little bit better from the last forecast that we reviewed. When, I know in the coming weeks, we will get more information, including the insurance. So when are we reviewing this again?
I'd say it depends if we want to do an interim one before the end of February. We could talk about, you know, the debt schedule and a few other pieces of information. I think the health insurance one is a big one, that's typically early March. So somewhere in that timeframe. One thing that I will say that came up at our forecast group meeting this afternoon is, even though this is good news from the state, there's a lot of uncertainty at the federal level right now that it's, it's unsure, or we're unsure how that may or may not trickle down to the state level. So that's just something that I know everyone's looking at, the MMA and everyone here.
Correct, yes, thank you.
And just following up, Michelle, am I correct that as we go out into the future, there is less confidence in the numbers? Because I'm looking at numbers as we look at the, at the shortfall going out in '27, '28, '29. The numbers keep getting bigger. And I am hoping that there is less confidence that those numbers are really as negative as they seem.
Yes, so we typically, you know, we try to have conservative, conservative estimates in here in terms of the revenue growth and in terms of how the state assessments and other items on the bottom may grow. What we're typically adjusting is the, the coming fiscal year, so just FY '26. The few exceptions are if you see, you know, new growth or something on the horizon, that we get notifications from our building commissioner or assessing department about construction projects. But typically, all we're really able to do is adjust FY '26 from what we're hearing at this time.
Right, so as we go out into the future, I noticed that, for example, state aid is staying flat. There's, there's no increase there.
That's right, and that was based on something that we heard from Rep. Moschino. So it's flat on the top and it's growing on the bottom to be conservative, but that will typically be updated, yes.
And just one other note there, Joe, there's nothing being applied from the Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund.
Right.
So that is something we may use in future years.
Yes. Ness, does your group have any questions on the forecast?
No, I do not believe so. I have not been able to share it with the full school committee yet, so they haven't seen it.
Well, this is their chance. But I will also say this is not the only chance.
No, I think we had a good discussion at the forecast meeting today. And I understand that there are still some estimates that need to be updated, so.
Okay, great. So then we can move on, I think, well, I'm sorry. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions on the preliminary five-year forecast? I am seeing none, so we can move on to the fiscal year '26 school department budget. to the fiscal year twenty six school department budget presentation.
Terrific, thank you, Joe, and thank you to the select board and advisory committee for joining us this evening. I would like to begin by introducing our central office team, uh which is a new team, uh newly formed and so grateful for all of their work and support together this year. Um so my name is Katie Roberts, the superintendent. Uh to my left here is Ayesha Opong, our executive director for business and support services. To her left is Dr. Barbara Cataldo, our executive director for student services. And to her left is Erica Pollard, our executive director of curriculum and instruction. Uh so the central office team has been working very closely together to prepare um the budget presentation this evening. I'd also like to thank our principals and curriculum directors, who also were instrumental in doing some of the data analysis and uh formulating some of the recommendations that you'll see this evening. And so I will, without further ado, um share this slideshow. And so I know many of you, particularly those of you on ACES, have now seen these introductory slides a few times. So apologies to Carol Tully and Brian Stack and some of the other members of ACES who have seen these introductory slides. But I know that we do have um some members here this evening and some members of the public who are just joining the conversation. So I wanted to make sure I'm providing um some context for the budget numbers that we'll share this evening. And so this evening, we'll give a brief overview of our uh timeline, context, and then get into the budget proposals. Uh first and foremost, want to make the point that a budget season is long and arduous and is an iterative process. So we have nine meetings over the course of the budget season. And at each presentation, we refine our projections and data and estimates, sometimes right up until minutes before uh the presentation. And so if you look at data over the course of the presentations, again, you might see um some adjustments as new information comes in. Um and so to give you a sense of our timeline, no sooner do our children um arrive in September than really we start to begin uh the conversations for the following year. Um so in October, our district leaders met um to determine some of our budget priorities um that really were rooted in two documents um that I will speak to this evening. One is something called the Portrait of a Learner, and I'll share more information about that. And of course, any budget is always rooted in a strategic plan. In addition to the priorities, the department leaders and principals also work to develop the needs um that would meet those priorities. And this year, um in most years, we would use two phrases. One would be level services and one would be level funded. This year, we're coming up with a new phrase, and that is the MO MOU funded budget. And so it's somewhere in between. Um so the instructions that I gave to our district leaders uh was to aspire to approach level services to the extent that we can and to be creative uh within uh the the three and a half percent MOU. Um so I did reference two documents that serve as our North Star um as we were planning. The first of these documents is one that we have been developing over the course of the fall. It's called a Portrait of a Learner document. Um so in public school settings, this Portrait of a Learner really helps us to envision our why and what we hope for our students. And so there are really two main components of the Portrait of a Learner. First is to identify the core skills and competencies that every Hingham learner should develop over the course of their time with us in the public schools. And then also need to think about the range of learners that we have. So in addition to those core competencies, um how might we meet the diverse needs, interests, and future paths of our students? Um so if you'd like to join us later in February, we'll be doing a deeper dive into that presentation. Um but some of the skills that are emphasized in a portrait of a graduate um that might move a little bit beyond those um core competencies of English, math, science, and so on would be things like being an effective communicator, a skillful collaborator, a creative problem solver, a responsible citizen, or a mindful individual. And so again, these are some of um the more human qualities that we too want for our students. Now, as I mentioned, every um budget is always rooted in a strategic plan. But I do need to mention that we are currently in year three of a strategic plan. And given the changes in leadership, um we did feel that it was important to re-center ourselves this fall on that Portrait of a Learner document. And so we really invested our time this fall um developing that. And we are um just at the beginning of developing the new strategic plan for the twenty five, twenty eight school years. However, many of the themes from the twenty two to twenty five um strategic plan are evergreen goals that will continue on into our next strategic plan. So we were able to use that document as a guiding um document for our budget planning. So in addition to those two documents of the Portrait of a Learner and the Strategic Plan, uh we also had some additional priorities. Um many of you who have joined us um for past school committee meetings have heard a lot about our multi-tiered system of support, which is also known as MTSS. Um so these are the sustained tiered systems that we use to support students both academically and social emotionally. Tier one is what we call our core instruction. So that is the the instruction that every child in Hingham will receive in their general education setting. Beyond that, we do have within the general education setting um some ways some ways to differentiate and to support students uh with shorter bursts of more intensive support as needed. Um this is very much rooted in data, and so over the past few years, we've really worked on developing a culture of data so we can best support students. Um we also, um a- any of you have joined us for um uh recent school committee meetings, know that student services and special education is a major area of focus of our improvement plans for the district. And I'm very grateful to Dr. Cataldo and her team for the progress that they have made over the two years that Dr. Cataldo has been with us. And we do have um a a a document that came out of an audit that was conducted of our special education and student services program that is informing the initiatives that we have in those departments. Another priority for the district and really any district is professional development. It is one of the most important levers to drive a district forward. And so we do want to make sure that we're investing in professional development to ensure that our educators are current on best practices um and uh can use that to um deliver a high-quality curriculum and again, those so so social emotional supports. Um in addition, we, of course, um need to have um facilities that support our programming. And so we are grateful to have safe, welcoming, and well-maintained facilities with high-quality technology to support that learning environment. Um this year, we also added um an additional sentence to this goal in really making sure that we're promoting efficient financial and human resource operations to support the smooth functioning of the district. And so this slide here, um I'm sure this uh group in front of me is very familiar with this. And so I don't need to give you uh quite the background on this that I might other groups, but I will uh for those listening in perhaps for the first time to the meeting this evening, just wanted to explain what we mean by the MOU budget, um the three and a half percent MOU. Um so the Memorandum of Um Understand- Understanding, as you are aware, is a four year four-year commitment signed in March twenty twenty four by the school committee, select board, advisory, superintendent, and town manager. It was intended to maintain cost increases at a specific rate as proposed by the Sustainable Budget Task Force. And so the annual operating budget growth for the town and school department is to be capped at three and a half percent for the FY twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty eight fiscal years. Uh the MOU at that time did articulate the understanding that increased costs in personnel, special education, and energy costs would result in deficits in the FY twenty five to twenty eight school year. And I did pull out a quote from that MOU that is particularly relevant um to my role. Um so fi- financial limitations in this budget may require the town to prioritize the utilization of available resources, which may leave certain programs and activities funded at a lower levels than desired or not funded at all. So the town administrator, Tom Mayo, and myself uh will be responsible for those prioritizations and cuts uh for the municipal and school departments respectively as needed. And so given um these assumptions, we did approach our budget this year um from a different angle. Uh we did assume zero-based budgeting for anything that is discretionary. I will share later that the piece of the pie that is discretionary is very small, about four percent of our budget um falls into this category, but we did build that up from zero. So supplies, techs, apps, and other discretionary lines, we built up from zero. That said, last year, we did cut deeply into that discretionary line, and really, there wasn't much deeper to go um in that particular area of our budget. Uh we then looked at any potential efficiencies, reallocations, and looked deeply at our enrollment. Um so in turn, what we call efficiencies would be um include retirements, of which we currently have few um given the the demographics of our um educator population, and leaves. We also considered um those as efficiencies um as needed. We did look at restructuring rules when possible. We looked at reassignment and sharing of staff, and again, we did look deeply at enrollment and class size. Um this year, we took a particularly close look at some of our offsets, and we'll speak to those this evening um and sources of revenue, which include fees and tuition. And as I mentioned, the the really the assumption that I shared with our principals and other district leaders was to aspire to approach level services within the constraints of the MOU and as possible, prioritizing those student-facing positions. And so our drivers, as in any school district, um of our budget include meeting contractual obligations. And so contractual agreements uh in uh the FY twenty six salary um line will range from three to seven percent when factoring in cost of living, steps, and lanes. We also have in our contracts increased tuition reimbursements, stipends, and longevity. And we also have increased substitute costs to cover the extended leaves. Um as we're feeling across the town, uh we do have increased fuel and utility costs. So as you're aware, um Hingham Municipal Light Plant will be increasing rates at six percent as of January twenty five. And it's important to note the two of our buildings are heated by electricity. Uh water is increasing by three percent, but sewer is increasing by eight percent. Um this evening, um you'll hear um some information about our special education and student services, which has been a major area of conversation over the past several um years of budget conversations. Coming off the pandemic, we do continue uh to have uh certain needs. And within our um student services and special education, we're particularly seeing increased needs in the SEL and behavioral realm, and we'll speak to those this evening. And we do continue to see an uptick in some other specialized services, including speech therapy. Uh we'll share some um more detailed information this evening uh regarding our out-of-district special education tuitions and services. Um it's important to note that these tuitions are set by an outside group, the Operational Services Division. Um this year, the increase um by OSD has been set at three point six seven percent. However, it's important to note that programs can apply for what's called program reconstruction. And these program reconstructions are oftenly often significantly higher than three point six seven percent, including some of the programs that our students are currently attending. And so I did just want to give the briefest of overviews of some of the academic data um that we e- use to center some of our decision-making. Uh we have a slides upon slides of slides, but I'm just going to share a couple of snapshots with you this evening. Um this first slide here, I wanted to share in part um so you have a sense of how your recent investments in education and the multi-tiered system of support have paid off for students as we've been coming off the pandemic. So this slide here tracks a cohort of kindergarteners um from the class of twenty thirty three who were kindergartners during that twenty twenty to twenty one COVID year. As anticipated, those students' um reading scores took a dip post-pandemic. Um and at that time, we deployed um significant amounts of resources to plugging those gaps. And you can see the significant recovery. Um so in this slide, you're seeing that many of our students are in fact now performing above benchmark. And that group of students performing well below benchmark has shrunk significantly over time. So this represents an investment in our MTSS and also um our investment in curriculum as well. So we did make a significant investment in hi- in a new high-quality literacy program. Um we also, of course, look at MCAS, um and so um that is another thing that we use. Particularly, um we do a deep dive into our subgroups um to see how we're do- uh how different subgroups are doing. And just wanted to briefly share um some of our curriculum and instruction initiatives for next year that are factoring into our budget planning. So in in addition to sustaining those elementary academic interventions that have been incredibly successful for students, we now need to look uh more deeply at those SEL interventions that may be needed because that data is not um following that same recovery trend in the same way that the academic data is. We also need to shift our focus to our secondary MTSS program. Our uh immediate focus post-pandemic was our youngest learners, making sure we had those core um those core competencies covered. But do need to really take a closer look at our secondary MTSS. Um we are um in the process of researching and hopefully piloting a new elementary math program to make sure that we're uh staying current with best practices and mathematics instruction. Um we are also at the secondary level, launching with the support of the Hingham Education Foundation, what's called a Building Thinking Classrooms Initiative, which is transforming secondary mathematics classrooms. And as I mentioned, we will be working to implement um the goals of that Portrait of a Learner. And so in terms of um in addition to that, looking at that academic data, the part that's a little bit less tangible is that second piece of looking at the range of offerings that we need to meet diverse needs, interests, and future paths. So particularly at the secondary level, when making decisions, we look at what students' future path might be and make sure that our future engineers and medical professionals and lawyers and artists and um future entrepreneurs are getting exposure um to the world that they will um be inheriting. And so do consider that when we make um decisions about programming. Um so I know that many are very interested in hearing about enrollment data and do just want to provide a little bit of history and context uh for uh our enrollment data. Um so our last uh formal enrollment study was conducted back in twenty eighteen by an organization called NESDEC. And so generally, districts um conduct an enrollment study every ten years. So we would have been up around uh twenty twenty eight for our next enrollment study. However, as you're aware, um a little pandemic um interrupted our uh enrollment study. And so we did feel that it was important um to engage a new enrollment study this year. And so in uh late November, um we repartners with NESDEC, spent the month of December gathering the necessary data. And just within the past few days, um Ayesha Opong and I uh met with the demographer from NESDEC and do have um the preliminary draft of that. Um my boss, the school committee, has not yet seen the full report, and so I will give them the courtesy of um seeing that uh first on Monday, uh February tenth. I would encourage any of you interested to join, but with their permission, I am s- sharing a sneak peek tonight of some of the data uh that will be coming from that study. Given that we weren't sure whether or not the enrollment study would be prepared for tonight, um Ayesha and I and um the rest of the team had prepared um some enrollment slides for you that are still in the packet. And so I will just go through those briefly. Um so as every district on the South Shore has experienced post-pandemic, um the Hingham Public Schools has experienced um a dip in enrollment in large part due to the private school flood um post-pandemic. Um we will um chat much more about that on um Monday evening when we get in to um dig into that NESDEC study. But um we do want to lead with, we have experienced a dip. However, when you take a look at the different grade levels, each um grade level band is painting a different picture. Um so the uh pre-K to five enrollment took a dramatic dip in the immediate year post-COVID, but has recovered rather nicely and seems to be evening out. The middle school, however, um i- is is continuing um uh to take a dip, as is the high school. And we'll share more on Monday evening, um some of the analysis that we have done on that. Um but I know that this is the slide that many are- But I know that this is the slide that many are interested to see. And again, this is a sneak peek of our presentation on Monday evening. And so NESDEC, in their enrollment study, presents a 10-year overview. But really, we take a look first at the three-year increment to use in our immediate planning and then use that 10-year increment for our longer-range planning. So the spoiler alert and the high-level summary of the NESDEC document is that our elementary enrollment, both over the next three years and over the next 10 years, is expected to increase. And my meeting with the demographer, along with Ayesha, they explained some of the modeling that they used. Birth rates in Hingham are actually up. And they also take a look at things like the fact a new school often does attract interest. We have found real estate officials have been very interested and asking a lot of questions about the new school. So again, on Monday, I'll share more information about the details used to make that projection. And given the increase in birth rate, the demographer also predicts over the next 10 years, an increase of 92 students. The middle school is expected to remain fairly steady over the next three years and in fact increase over the next 10 by about 63 students. The grades 9 to 12 enrollment, this projection really is in large part derived by looking at the private school flood that we've had over the past five years. And so that is a number that I do think our team can move by doing some positive messaging to the community about the terrific program that we have at the Hingham Public Schools. But again, that I think is really where our work is in the years ahead. So over the next three years, there is an anticipated decrease of 95 students based on the last five years of behavior of families. And over the next 10 years, a potential decrease of 168 students. So over the next 10 years, it's expected to be a net of loss of 13 students, so essentially even over the next 10 years. But again, I thought it was important to distinguish the elementary trends from the middle school trends to the high school trends. In addition to taking a look at enrollment, I did also want to share a tool that I use frequently. And they will be providing some updated data later in March. And that tool is the DESI Radar Tool that provides some really helpful tools for comparisons in order to make effective resource allocation. So this first slide here compares Hingham to the state averages with regard to staffing of teachers, paraprofessionals, leadership, student supports, and clerical and technology. So one thing I would like to point out is the leadership in Hingham is slim relative to the state average. Our teaching line is in line with the state average. Our paraprofessional rate is slightly higher than the state average. Student support is slightly lower, and clerical is roughly even with the state. However, in education land, in any of the DESI reports that are produced, we most often, whether it's academic data or other forms of data, we use what are called comparable districts. So I know that on the town side, for municipal planning purposes, we have a historic group of area towns that we have used since the dawn of time to compare ourselves to and for financial purposes. However, in the school setting, DESI compares us to other comparable districts. And so this is the list of 10 districts that in every DESI report I generate that we are compared against. So again, the previous slide I shared compared us to the state average. This slide here compares us to the 10 comparable districts that DESI compares us to. And DESI is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And so this slide shows that again, our teaching, full-time equivalent, or FTEs, is roughly equivalent to our benchmark districts, 8.3 to 8.2. Our parrot educators, we have a slightly higher ratio than our benchmark districts. As I noted, our leadership is slightly lower than our benchmark districts. And student support and clerical are on par with our peers in the academic realm. Also wanted to share this evening, average class sizes. So at the elementary level, we do have some uneven cohorts that are progressing through our district. And this is something that is typical for a district. And so you can see here that we have total class sizes across the district, with the highest being grade 2, has a population of 305. And our current lowest group is our grade 1, which has 253 students. And so you can see over time that some years, for example, at East School, we might have four sections of classes one year and three sections the next year, depending on the total size of that class. It's important to note, at the bottom of the screen there, I did share that the school committee policy with regard to maximum class size. For K1, the maximum is 23, and for grades 25 is 25. So when we're projecting the number of sections needed for the following year, we do use that metric. Next up is our average class size at the secondary level. This gets a little bit more challenging to make inferences from because this is an average of every class at the high school and every class at the middle school. So for example, our average class size for ELA, which is English Language Arts, would include a senior AP class that might have 25 students in it or a what we call a college prep 2 course, which we purposefully design to be smaller for students who require additional supports. So the average, in this case, really isn't as useful because of the range of classes that we are capturing. So there's a significant range represented in that average, ranging from again, a low of perhaps 12 to we have many classes in the honors and AP level that would be closer to the 25-student range. Similarly challenging to compare apples to apples is our electives. Elective class sizes are in many cases driven by the size of the room. So our family consumer science classes at the high school only have lab stations for 16 students. And you can imagine, from a safety standpoint, we don't want to exceed that. Similarly, our tech and engineering space with our woodworking tools, our programs are limited, those specialty programs are in some cases limited by the number of pottery wheels in our art studio and so on. Okay, and so hopefully that provided some helpful context. I know that particularly enrollment is an area of interest that I'm happy to dig into. And again, welcome anyone who would like to join us on Monday evening. But now wanted to move on to the financial data. So as I mentioned, Ayesha prepared a terrific pie chart for us here that really paints the picture of how limited we are in our discretion in terms of that gray piece of the pie, which again, is things like supplies and textbooks and so on, is only 4% of the budget. The large blue portion, of course, is salaries. And these are contractual salaries that are coming in at 81% of our budget. That orange slice of the pie, that 15%, is also contracted. Things like utilities that are set at a fixed rate that we really do not have much discretion over. I will now pass this off to Ayesha to share some information about the forecast.
Do you want to take any questions before, or should we just jump into the financial data?
I defer to Joe Fisher on that.
I'm sorry, what was your question, Ayesha?
Would you like us to take any questions before we jump in? Because before we jump into the financial data, or should we just jump?
I think we should proceed with the presentation, then we'll ask questions.
So I'm taking a hint from Michelle once a year in terms of the town forecast information. We stick that slide from Michelle, thanks to Michelle, into our presentation just to show where most of our revenue is coming from in terms of our town revenue. And in terms of the education budget, we have the $70 million, which Michelle discussed earlier. And that is our 3.5% for the year. In terms of, and what I will do is I'll focus on the revenue aspects of our budget, and then we'll go into some of the expenditures. Another big area for us in terms of our revenue are revolving funds. Those revolving funds, the revenue from those arise mostly from fees. For example, in the case of the athletic fee for students in the high school, they contribute or they pay an athletic fee, which they contribute to the budget as part of providing a diverse amount of sporting activities. This goes into paying for the coaches, the transportation to the games and back, in some cases, field rentals, and other big expenses that we have. The building rental fees for some of our buildings, we, for most of our buildings, for example, on the weekends, some of our in-town sports would have sporting activities, and we charge a rent for that, and that goes towards our budget as well. The field use fees, this is, before we signed an MOU with the rec department, the school department managed our fields ourselves, and we collected revenue for the use of our fields. Since signing that MOU with the rec department, the rec department, through their contractor, maintain all of our field, most of our fields, and collect the revenue from the field use as well. And what we were able to do, however, was to save some money from the past field use revenues and hold those into the field use revolving account. And the plan for this, which I've kind of inherited from the old business manager, was the use of that revolving account to be applied to the turf renovation, which we'll speak about later on in the meeting. You will learn that part of that revenue that we collected in the past will go against the replacement of the turf at the high school. In terms of the middle school and the high school, we charge activity fees because particularly at the high school, there are a large variety of activities which our students engage in. And for those, we ask them to contribute a small fee to help us with that. In terms of preschool tuitions, we have, this year actually, we've expanded our preschool in a very big way because we now have the Foster space. We're able to have six preschool classrooms, integrated classrooms in the Foster building. And for those integrated classrooms, for those students who are typical or community pairs, we're able to charge tuition for those tuitions. And as part of that, that revenue goes towards our budget as well. We also offer driver's ed program at the high school. And for that, we were able to collect some revenue from that as well. We have a Kids in Action program, which is an after-school, before-school, and also a preschool program. That preschool program also will have six classrooms next year as well. And those six classrooms will be at the East Elementary School. Together with the revenue from the preschool programs, from the Kids in Action program, and from the before and after-school program, which is now in all four elementary schools, we provide before and after-school care, after-school care, but before-school in only two buildings. And that revenue goes towards our budget as well in terms of rental space, utilities, and custodial expenses. School lunch, this is a revolving account that in terms of providing lunch to our students in the building. Most of those, our lunches is mostly free for first lunch. But there are instances where students do provide revenue to us in terms of any extra, extras that they purchase, in terms of the cookies or extra drinks or the things that they get. And we also get some revenue from the state in terms of that school lunch. Most of those revolving accounts, I need to say as well, is that the expenditure for those accounts can only be spent specifically for the programming that they will create it for. And we do not have the liberty to use those funds for anything that we would like to use it for. So specifically, in terms of the food program, we can only use the expenses, spend money from that account for things that are specific to the food program. This year, we were able to get approval from the state to fund a rooftop unit at the South Elementary School because that rooftop unit is in the cafeteria. So that food revolving account, the lunch account, was able to provide revenue for that major expenditure, capital expenditure that we have at the South Elementary School. Full-day kindergarten, we still collect, we are one of few towns in the South Shore and in Massachusetts that still charge a full-day kindergarten fee. And that fee contributes largely to our budget as well. At the high school, we have a far lot and a close lot where the students who drive in get to park at the high school. And for those lots or slots, we charge a fee as well. For the first time this year, we are also implementing a transportation fee to help close the gap in our budget. And that fee, the school committee voted on yesterday, will be at the secondary level for students in grade 7 to 12, as well as students in our private schools that we transport within the same grades as well. The next slide combines our revolving accounts and all our grants that we receive in addition to all the revolving accounts mentioned before. And the amounts that we, what we've done over time is to make sure that in terms of those deductions or expense amounts coming out of those revolving accounts, we want to make sure that we can have those funds, the flow of those funds, in perpetuity so that the inflows match the outflows at some point, and we don't dry up the funds by excessive use of those revolving funds. So just to make the committee, the advisory and select board aware that in terms of using those funds this year to close the loop, we're still very careful to make sure that we will continue to have those funds available in the future as well. In terms of grants, we have the IDA grant, which is a grant specifically for special needs, special needs students. We largely use this grant to cover tuitions. And in the past, we've also used this grant to cover summer school for students as well. We also have an early childhood grant and a circuit breaker grants, which come from this, the circuit breaker grant comes from the state and largely closes the loop, closes the loop on our tuitions. And I think that covers most of the grants that we have. We also have Medco, which is another grant that we get for the students who come in. And the Medco grant makes a small contribution towards our teaching line as well, just to make you aware of that as well. So this is just kind of all of the revenue that we have in terms of both revolving and grant revenue. And that contributes to our overall budget. From an expenditure perspective, I just wanted to go through this with, this slide here with you in terms of how we have planned to spend this year. In terms of the school committee line, we have a small increase in that line. This is just more, just to kind of give you an update. But this particular slide is basically summarizing our whole budget, and we've taken it into some major categories. In terms of the details, we have over 700 lines into our chart of accounts, but we've tried to simplify it in this manner so it gets, it's more edible to you as well, right? In terms of being able to digest that. The school committee line includes expenses. We don't pay our school committee, everything is all volunteer, thanks to them. But in terms of that line, it includes legal fees. It also includes training for new Um, it also includes um, training for new school committee members coming on um, as well as these are the largely the the main accounts in that in that um, line here. Um, trading for the school committee, we've been lucky to have the the same school committee members for the last few years, but we also have or have to make sure that we keep um, a small amount for training in case we do have new people coming on. Okay. The administration line um, here largely includes um, salaries for central office. Um, um, both the administrators and admin assistants as well as supplies, um, programming, computer agreements and other things that we use to run the central office, um, the the school department um, from central office. Um, the teaching line here largely includes mostly all our teaching, all of our regular education teaching staff. And you see that um, this would in terms of the increases um, that we've um, contractually agreed to um, pay this year, uh, looking at this line here, we're just looking at the comparison from the previous years here based on our contract for this year. Professional development, this line includes, this line includes um, professional development and training for our staff. Um, a big part of the expenses that go into this line here for course reimbursements, which is also a contractual line as well. Um, textbooks and instructional equipment and instructional technology. These are all the things that make um, make the the schools run in terms of um, teaching our students and the tools that we use to make sure that we can provide an education to them. Um, library includes mostly the staff that fills our libraries and books and other materials for our libraries as well. Health service, sorry, counseling would be our couns guidance counselors. Um, health services will be our nurses. Um, transportation would be our regular education transportation. Um, the regular education trans- transportation would be our buses. Um, as most of you may know, we lease our buses in Hingham. Um, and one of the things that we were asking to our meeting and we will discuss later um, during our meeting here will be um, trying to get three new electric school buses. Um, that line is included in there as well for the lease of those buses. Food service, that in the past, we've had a small expense, but largely that program is independent of the operating account. Athletics, we have a one point four million dollar gross amount in terms of our athletic program. Um, but then we also have an offset for the fees which we spoke about earlier. Um, a lot of, we have gotten many questions in terms of our athletics and in in terms of increasing those fees over the last, the course of the last few years, but as you can tell from this line here, um, the fee doesn't cover the full amount of our athletics program. And most times we have to keep on increasing that fee to just stay in line with the costs of providing that programs that come with athletics as well. Um, other student activities will be in terms of our high school and middle school programs. Security, the security line here is a very small line. Um, but most of our security equipment is taken out of our capital requests that um, so it's not all, all of our security is not provided by this line here. Custodial is mostly custodial staff, um, and our custodial supplies, our heating of our buildings, um, and utilities, our maintenance and grounds. We also, in addition to the rec department in terms of providing um, the the fees that come from um, that are generated from the individual fees, um, school, school, school grounds and fields, we also provide a small um, amount to the rec department every year as part of our contribution to the care of our fields. Um, repairs and equipment of equipment, this includes a lot of equipment that we use for as part of our instruction and also for our maintenance itself. Um, employee retirements, um, when our employees retire, we have a small benefit based on the contract that we pay out to them. That's captured here. Um, in terms of building and rents, we rent out a building in Waymouth for our traces program. And um, our special ed lines here include supervision, instruction, professional development. It kind of mirrors a lot of what we have within the regular education um, departments as well. Um, and then we also have out-of-district tuitions and vocational tuitions that are covered here as well. Okay. And then the last slide, as part of our efforts to provide a balanced budget, unfortunately, we had to look at reductions within our budgets as well. Um, we've been able to, because of leaves and retirements, reduce most of our reductions to efficiencies, but we still have a few um, reductions that we had to make. And as um, the superintendent Roberts always says and and um, Chair um, Karanti that um, every reduction is always a person and we always are sorry to not be losing a person. Okay. And in terms of special education, I'll pass it back on to you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so next up, um, we'll um, review some of our assumptions and priorities with regards to our special education budget. Um, the first point that I would like to make is all of the improvements and um, academic initiatives that I meant um, suggested earlier that uh, involve general education apply to our special education students. So special special education students are general education students first. And so in strengthening our tier-one instruction in general education, uh, we we are also supporting our special education students. Um, so one of the main assumptions, um, when we're discussing our special education budget is that we are meeting the requirements of what's known as IDEA, the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. So this act um, requires that we provide all students with a free and appropriate in um, education in the least restrictive environment. And it also dictates that decision-making for a student with disabilities is made by the IEP team. And so that is an important piece of um, the puzzle in terms of budgets. The IEP team is in the position to make decisions. And so at this time of year, those decisions are still in the process of being made. So IEPs are still actively being written throughout the spring, which makes our crystal ball for special education somewhat cloudy. So again, we will present this evening our best um, projections based on the information that we have at this point, based on the IEPs that are written, knowing that changes can be made um, throughout the spring. Um, another assumption we had with regard to our special education program, I mentioned that audit that was done of our special education program. And again, thank Dr. Cataldo and her team for making progress uh, towards the strategic plan that was written around that audit, uh, which involves strengthening our specialized curriculum and supports and also aligning our specialized programming to the needs of students. Um, as part of this audit, we also did take a look at our administrative structures um, to look and see if we could um, make those even more efficient and effective. And as we have over the past several years, we took a deep dive into our out-of-district placements and some of the specialized services that come with those out-of-district placements. Um, so I mentioned earlier, one of my favorite data tools, the DUCI radar tool. Um, in addition to providing some great um, analysis of general education, um, they do also provide um, some very helpful um, data analysis with regard to special education. Um, one important point that I would like to point out from this slide here is that while our overall enrollment has declined post-pandemic, the total N of our special education students has actually written, risen over time. And so over the past um, several years, uh, we have gone from six hundred and four um, special education students in twenty twenty to six hundred and eighty-six special education students in twenty twenty-four. So in addition to the increase in total N, this also significantly increases the proportion of our students that um, receive special education services. So again, while our total enrollment has declined, the total N and that therefore also the percentage of the total population have both increased um, over the past five years. Um, this slide here just shares a breakdown of uh, students um, on individualized education plans at each school, um, and you can uh, note some differences um, in the levels. I did just want to point out that um, at the high school, we would anticipate a lower percentage of students on individualized education uh, programs at the high school level. So that is not an atypical trend. Um, this year, in response to some feedback from the select board and advisory committee, uh, we are presenting um, our out-of-district tuitions in a somewhat more granular way. We do want to be careful of student privacy, and so we therefore cannot present to you individual tuitions for each student um, due to privacy. But we feel that this slide here does give you a bit more granularity with regard to um, the grade level bands of the students. Um, and this information too is also informing some of our discussions around some of the specialized programming that we can offer within the district. So I want to stress that this slide here shows the students that are out of district, but do also want to remind the committee that we do have some specialized programming that currently exists within our district that is helping us to retain students from going out. This would include our CLC, um, which our Comprehensive Learning Center, our lab-based program, which is a language-based program. Uh, we have a program called Rise um, for students with more um, significant needs. And so we um, want to also note that we are in conversations currently with the South Shore Educational Collaborative about potentially building one additional program next year um, that might um, actually help us address um, some of um, the out-of-district um, current needs. Um, so I mentioned that we are seeing an uptick in SEL and behavioral needs. And so we are in conversations with the collaborative um, to provide a behavioral um, program, a therapeutic program in-house next year. And um, the reason we are able to do that next year is because of the additional space afforded at Foster. And so we um, have already um, had the director of the collaborative over to view the site. Uh, we are currently in conversations. And so again, you may see some movement in um, the numbers that you see, um, depending on how those conversations um, evolve. Um, and so um, I was hoping Dr. Cataldo could just uh, briefly talk us through this slide and the next slide.
Let me work off my screen here.
Sure, and um, make sure that she has her mic on. Yep, great. Thank you.
So just in terms of the students that we have, what's really important to understand is during the pandemic, it really created a blip, not just for our district, for all districts, but tonight, we're only worried about what is happening in Hingham and not what happens in any other city or town. And so we've had a surge of students leaving because of behavioral needs. Uh, those students, we know that was the reason why last year I said we need to look to build programming and we believe wholeheartedly by having those programs in our districts, it will reduce the number of students who have exited, uh, who will exit and then the number of students who have exited will eventually um, graduate and then the number should begin to drop. So it's important there. The other thing to understand is that as under the law, that we are required to educate students through the age of twenty-two. So we typically think high school, we get to the end in twelfth grade, students take a diploma and they might go on to a post-secondary opportunity. That is not required of our students under the IDEA law. We sometimes have to provide them with other kinds of opportunities and they are with us until they are twenty-two years of age. One of the things I talked about last year and I will reiterate, and I know that Mrs. Roberts brought up once already, is the cost of some of these schools when we have students who are in programs that are day programs. Uh, those day programs can run a hundred sixty thousand dollars and the transportation to get them back and forth can run another seventy-five thousand dollars. Which you hear that and you think, wow, but we have to educate our children in the environment that they need. At the same time, we also are well aware that some of our residential programs can creep up as high as four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That is not the situation currently in town, but we do have some students that require some significant assistance here. And as a result, you can see why the numbers have risen the way they've risen. But we're very hopeful now with the additional new programming, the MTSS. We really wholeheartedly believe that this is starting to have an impact on our students that will change some of these trends.
And just want to make the point again that we have an obligation um, to provide um, for students' needs and that we will never bring out-of-district tuitions to zero. Um, that students will have um, needs that cannot be met uh, within district and need to provide them. Um, but we are um, working earnestly um, towards serving any student that we can within the district. One thing I'd like to uh, point out is um, that um, we do need, in order to build a program, we need what's called a cohort, enough students with similar needs and profile in order to make that um, programming in district um, cost-effective and also provide a peer group for those students.
Sure, and that's one of the really important things when we think about why do we have students exit our district? Well, if we have a child that has one particular kind of need, if it were your child, would you want your child coming to school every day, sitting in a classroom by themselves with a teacher all day long? And that's not the way that we're supposed to educate our children. And our goal is always, under the law, to settle with the least restrictive setting that we can help children to be moving forward and accomplishing uh, their education in the classroom setting. But unfortunately, as Mrs. Roberts brought out, sometimes if we only have one student, we have to provide them with an atmosphere where they can have a cohort of friends.
And uh, one last point that I'd just like to make is that um, when I'm presenting out-of-district um, data, I will always timestamp it because um, out-of-district um, um, inflow and outflow does not necessarily happen on September one. And so um, Dr. Cataldo mentioned that um, some of the students um, are educated until they're twenty-two and they age out on their birthday. And other students are coming into out-of-district at different points of the year. Um, so if Brian Stack asks me next Wednesday what the out-of-district number is, that number may change. And again, um, for that reason, I will always timestamp um, a slide. So if you're seeing uh, the numbers fluctuate, there is um, inflow and outflow over the course of a school year. Okay. Um, Ayesha, did you want to share this?
Mm-hmm. All right, and um, as as Superintendent Roberts um, mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, um, our budget really is an MOU budget this year. So we see that um, throughout that the MOU speaks loudly in terms of a lot of decisions that we are making and in terms of how um, the budget is structured as well. Um, one of the excerpts from the the MOU was, also spoke specifically to special education. And with special education, um, there were specific exhibits or denims that provided um, the costing over time for special education in certain categories. Um, for example, in terms of tuitions, specialized services and transportation. And there's a two percent threshold that needs to be um, hurdle that you needs to be jumped, so to speak, in order to get that that MOU um, funding from that funding from the town as well. Um, so what we've done typically is that we've provided a schedule where we look at our budgeted numbers in terms of our tuitions. And then um, from year to year, we look at what that two percent threshold is and whether, and we compare our budget for the year to that threshold. So for example, in the in the MOU document that was signed back in twenty-three, the initial amount that was presented was a tuition amount, which was the baseline amount for tuitions, transportation and specialized services. And every year, um, based on the next slide, um, that those amounts are increased by two percent, which is the hurdle um, or the base that we are comparing our expenditure to from year to year. So for example, in back in twenty twenty-three, you would have had the base year. And then every year after that, we um, then see a growth rate of two percent from twenty-four to twenty-seven. Those numbers here form the thresholds for Those numbers here form the thresholds for the next slide, where you will see our current expenditure for financial year '26. And you will see also, what we did was that we carried over, basically what the language of the MOU states, is that we first have to apply all our grant monies to the special education lines. And in terms of that, we then use the thresholds from the MOU and then look at what is the residual amount afterwards that will be borne by the town in terms of tuition, specialized services, and transportation. And that, those slides, 49, 50 to 51, kind of speak to those amounts and use that same formula from year to year. And in terms of the MOU, it was good that we actually had those numbers in there as a basis for it, so we can always look back to it and it can form the basis for how those calculations work. Okay? And from, so basically, we were looking at, as I mentioned before, tuition, specialized services, and transportation. And some, sometimes you may ask, why, why, some people may ask, why, why those areas versus other areas? At the time when the MOU was written, for tuitions as an example, we looked back at, we had a significant increase in tuitions at the time during that year. The out-of-district, the ODD, out-of this, the, oh, the operational, operational.
For the OST.
OST, sorry. Operational Services Division. I'm gonna, I'm confusing my acronyms now. Operational Services Division had proposed almost a 14% increase in tuition, in tuition during that year. And when we had looked back over many years at the increases in tuitions, what we had seen was that there was only a 2% increase in tuitions over time. So at the time when we looked and we, and we created the MOU, the idea was that, that we, at that time, we figured that that 14% was a blip, and we would, over time, get back and regularize back to that 2%. We have seen that increase come down significantly from that year, from 14% to 3.67 this year. And our hope is, with inflation hopefully continuing to settle, that we will come back to that 2% threshold. So that's kind of the basis for why 2% in terms of looking at the historical data. And in terms of tuitions, we had seen that big blip in terms of the cost of tuitions at that time. And we're hoping that as time progresses, we will come back to a time when we can get back to 2% again. In terms of transportation, that's another area where particularly contracted transportation. We're very fortunate in Hingham in that we've, we, for most of our special ed transportation, it's provided internally. We have our own school vans, and our school vans provide transportation for most of our students. But there are cases where situations may arise, where situations may arise where we may not have, be able to provide that transportation for students internally, and we have to look to contracted transportation providers to provide that transportation for our special ed, special ed students. And one of the good questions that came from our capital depart, our capital division, capital committee, outlet committee, was to look at the cost comparison of the cost of transportation in terms of what we're providing for special ed versus the cost to contract it. And to look at the delta between contracted transportation and the cost to provide internally. And in looking at that data for that committee, to make sure that we could provide a response to that question that came up, what we, I spoke to the special ed department, and one of the things that came up was that, in, before any contractor is used, she goes out to the market to try to find the best price for contractors. And sometimes, for most of the cases, because, because sometimes we're asking for, the reason why we're going out to market to get a contractor is because it's usually mid-year, and we've had a new student go out of district or a new situation arise, and all of our vans are currently in use. So, and it's difficult at that point in time to say, okay, we'll get another van and put this kid on a van and get the kid out to school. So we need to contract at that point in time. So we go out to get quotes and bids in terms of that transportation. And a lot of times, either one, it's not available, because most of the, there are no contractors that can actually provide transportation for the, our students, or the student, the contractors that come back provide exorbitant prices in terms of that. Sometimes we're seeing routes as close as the South Shore Collaborative, and we're being quoted, the South Shore Collaborative in Hingham, and sometimes we're getting prices back as much as $300 a day for those students. So even in terms of pulling that data together and comparing that data to the cost of providing that transportation, and that's something that we need to do anyhow as part of our circuit breaker process. Every year, we need to provide the cost of the transportation that we provide for our students to the state. So we provide that data. And in terms of pulling that information and that comparison to the committee as well, we're seeing that we're saving a lot by providing that transportation internally. But every now and then, we do have those case scenarios come up where we have to provide transportation for students through a contractor, because we're just not able to get a van, get a driver, and provide that service for us, to our students. Okay? So that's one of the reasons why, because we have very little control over that cost and that expenditure from year to year, and most times it arises at the spur of the moment. It's one of those areas that was brought into the MOU because of the limited control that we have here. It's funny, because Superintendent Roberts kind of equates special education and transportation to almost our snow and ice budget, where from any one year to the next year, you're not 100% sure exactly what it will be. So it's important to be able to have that flexibility that the MOU provides us in terms of being able to make sure that we can have some certainty with our budget if we can. So. And then the last piece are the specialized services. As Superintendent Roberts mentioned before, the specialized services, a lot of those services are in terms of speech and language services, behavior, behavioral services, and back when the language services and equipment, and equipment and contractors as well, as well as home and hospital tutors. What we had seen at the, at back in 2023 was a rise in behavioral issues with students coming out of the pandemic. It's something that has not leveled off yet or dropped significantly yet. And we're continuing to see, particularly in terms of speech, a lot of our students who didn't have exposure to the classroom or were at home for a long time and not exposed to student, other kids and friends impacted greatly in terms of speech. And we're still having to try to get people who are able to, we have our own internal speech and language pathologists within our own departments, but sometimes, again, we have to go out to contract for those services because we just have such a high need in that area. And in terms of the behavioral texts, or behavioral specialized services, that's another area where we've seen a continuous growth in the need from our students. And by parceling out that area of specialized services was an area, or still is an area, where it's one of the, the results of the pandemic that hasn't quite leveled off yet. We've gotten MTSS into a place where our students academically are better, but the socially, social and emotional services and, socially and emotional aspects of our students have not leveled off, and these are some of the costs of providing those services to our students.
And this is obviously not unique to Hingham. This is statewide and actually nationwide.
Okay. And then overall, we then compare the total amounts of those buckets to the MOU amounts. And we are seeing some, a small reduction in the amount that is applied to the town this year because of a few students are actually going to be leaving the, leaving our schools this year. So we, instead of, instead of having a full year of some of those tuitions, we are seeing a prorated amount of tuitions for some of the students, depending on when they age out. So a process called age, called aging out, which is normally at 22, or if the students actually get a diploma earlier and can age out earlier. There are a few students like that that are coming up this year. So that small reduction that you're seeing is because of that.
Student fees. Great. Sure. Yeah. So next up, we'll just discuss a bit about student fees. And so before I share some of the information about student fees that we do suggest increasing, want to provide some historical context. So if you do look at the Sustainable Budget Task Force document from 2022, one of the recommendations out of that document with regard to the schools was recommending that the schools take a look at two fees in particular, one being the athletics fee. As Mrs. Opang mentioned, the athletic, costs of running our athletic program has increased and has outpaced the rate at which we are collecting the fees to defray that. And the second fee that was recommended that the schools investigate is, in fact, the bus fee. So Hingham has been fortunate over the past many years. I do thank in part Dr. Gallo for her commitment to this, and we have not been in a position to have to charge a bus fee. So it's important to note that in, the law is that we must transport any student in K to six that is further than two miles from school. We are not required to transport students in K to six within two miles, and we have no obligation to transport secondary students. That said, we're in a town that has some major roads cutting through it, so again, walking to school and someone is not always feasible. So it is an essential service that we do need to provide. But we have, over the course of the last few meetings, including last night, shared some of the benchmarking that we've done with our surrounding towns and attempted to share some suggested fees that would be in line with our, our benchmark communities. And so just to provide a summary of the student fees that are currently in existence, so we do, at the middle school and high school, have a $100 activity fee for students participating in any of our clubs. We are one of very few districts that still charge for full-day kindergarten. There are four on the South Shore and fewer than 20 districts out of the hundreds of districts across the state that still charge a fee for a full-day kindergarten. We do charge tuition for our Kids in Action program, which is, Mrs. Opang mentioned, is a source of income. We do collect fees from our driver's education program. We collect fees when students at the middle school who participate in our one-to-one Chromebook program, if they do break their Chromebook, there is a repair fee if they do not have insurance. So the three fees that we did propose increases to include the parking fee for high school students who park in either the close or the far lot at the high school. We're proposing a differential for the close versus far lot. The close lot spots are considered premium by students, and particularly on a rainy day or a snowy, snowy day. And so we did propose a $250 fee for a close lot and 125 for a far lot. Again, after great discussion and consideration. For the athletics fees, we had been fortunate to only charge students for the first fee, first sport rather, that they participated in. But we did this year introduce a fee if a student does participate in a second sport. So we're able to increase the athletics fee that way. Increased the differential for students who participate in hockey. The ice time is expensive, and so it is a more significant outlay of costs for the hockey program. And we did increase the family cap for, for families with multiple students. And again, it, with, after great discussion and thoughtful consideration, we do propose introduction of a transportation fee only at the secondary level. So for students in grades seven to 12, a transportation fee of $250 per student with a $500 family cap. I will also note that two of us in the central office team will be impacted, and we did tax ourselves. So I have two children at the secondary level, and Ayesha has three. And so both the transportation fee and the athletics fee, we too will feel that, that pinch, but did feel that in the spirit of trying to be creative when it came to the MOU and preserve student-facing positions and the range of offerings that we offer, this was one of the few levers left in our toolbox. As I mentioned, our discretionary line, we had really dug as deep as we could. And so for this year, we did explore this one last additional lever that we had in our toolbox of looking at fees. I will say that I do think we are, at this point, capped in terms of the fees that we can explore. So I do not suggest, recommend, or anticipate significant increases in fees next year. And so this really is kind of the last remaining lever that we have in our toolbox for closing the gap. And so in terms of our next steps, we have not heard yet this evening from our excellent Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. So Erica, just so we can hear your voice, can you share the remaining, remaining steps in our process?
Yes. So obviously, we're here tonight at our joint budget meeting, and we'll have our public hearing on February 10th, followed by additional meetings with the Advisory Committee on February 13th and a joint session on February 25th.
Thank you, Erica. And so we welcome and invite any questions.
So, thank you for a thorough and enlightening presentation. Takes a lot of work, and we really appreciate the facts that you've given us. I think a number of us have questions. Looking at our agenda tonight, after this, we have six warrant articles to consider and other items. And so I am going to suggest that we have a continuation of this meeting to ask questions. I think there are a number of folks who, who have important questions. I'm going to open it up for a brief period of time, but I don't want to have extended questions, otherwise we'll be here till two in the morning. And, and I'm just going to ask, make some comments and just ask one or two questions. When you were giving us the, the class sizes, and you, you pointed out accurately that the averages may be distorted, can you provide us with median figures? Because those would be robust, and they would not be distorted by really small and really high numbers.
That's something I'm happy to present at a future meeting.
Yeah, I think getting the median information would be helpful.
Sure.
And you gave us information on class sizes. Do you have information on the capacity of our buildings? What, what percent where we're using them?
We do. And so again, on, on Monday evening, we can share that. So as part of the enrollment study, I did also dig into our building capacity. I, we pull the building capacity from a number of sources. One is our work with Habib Associates. They have helped us take a look at capacity. I also have spent some time with members of the Building Committee, including Gene Raymond, who designed the new Foster. And he provided a lot of history for me in terms of how projections, so MSBA numbers assume 21 to 22 students per classroom, but we also can do calculations based on our own local figures of 23 and 25. So given that we just received the enrollment study within the past week, we're working towards kind of intersecting the enrollment study with some of the data gathering that I'm doing from varied sources. And it is interesting to note that, again, there are different metrics for measuring building capacity. One other metric just to note is that organizations like the MSBA consider 80% utilization the sweet spot in order to accommodate things like at the secondary level, in order to use every room, every pier. Um, in order to use every room, every period means that there is no time in the school day for a science teacher um, to break down one lab and set up the next lab. There's no time uh, to prepare um, within the classroom. So um, particularly at the at the secondary level, and again, this is new information. I am uh, learning quite a bit about building capacity. Um, uh, there is um, kind of an industry uh, standard. And again, um, I'm particularly grateful to Gene Raymond, who provided um, some uh, information about the Foster Building specifically and how um, what assumptions were used in that calculation. But MSBA assumes twenty-one to twenty-two students per classroom.
Um, and just one final comment. You talked about transportation and uh, getting the students to to class, getting to the schools. Just so you know, um, one of the initiatives that I have been spearheading for six years and may finally see something is increased um, bike paths and uh, walking to the high school. Um, basically a path uh, going through Wampatuck State Park. So that's 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 important from my perspective. Uh, so with that, Liz, if you've got any pressing questions, the floor is yours.
Okay, great. Well, thank you to the team. Um, great presentation, very thorough. Um, I know we don't have a ton of time. I would definitely like to, and we can do this offline, but dig into the school lunch revolving fund. And do we know for sure that is it going to be free lunch provided by the state next year?
It's included in the budget.
It is included in the budget.
The governor's budget.
Okay, okay, great. Um, as far as the transportation, were you saying that we provide free transportation to the private schools currently?
So, you can take it?
You can take the transportation.
So in terms of um, the private schools, um, mass law dictates that we do not differentiate in terms of transporting private school students within our um, for students who live in Hingham but go to private schools. So we have to treat them exactly the same way as we treat our own students that are go to the public schools. Um, so in terms of those students, um, the same rule that um, Superintendent Robert spoke about in terms of students from K to six um, having to um, having to be transported by our buses if they live um, more than two miles from the schools. We have to use that same ma- metrics for the private schools as well. And in terms of those um, seven to twelve year graders, um, who would need to be, who would, who would want to be transported for the, just to just to kind of tell, let the committee know as well, we do not currently transport any high schoolers um, because we are not required to. Um, but in terms of any, um, I think the place where we see the most um, trans- private school transportation would be for our seventh to eighth graders. And those would be similar to our public school students be charged a fee.
Sure, okay. Um, and then this is another conversation probably for another night, but just digging into the special education data. Um, would love to understand why the high school five oh four number is so high. Um, but we don't have to get into that tonight. Unless you want to comment on it, Dr. Gallo.
Well, I was also going, oh. Sorry, forgot it was so far away. So we can break that out, but also understand that the five oh fours are not strictly educational, that our students also have medical five oh four. So if they have medical needs, they might not be getting any um, thing for their education, but they have protection due to whatever they have going on for their health.
Okay, thank you.
Tina.
Great, thank you. Um, thank you so much for that presentation. It was comprehensive. It was, it was, there was so much really great information in there and we appreciate it. Um, I want to ask the Advisory Committee, uh, we have a meeting, as you can see, next Thursday. And if we could forward questions for the School Department through Brian, who's the Chair of ACIS, so that we can get them to the School Committee in advance, so they can be prepared for our questions. If you could get questions to Brian by Friday, um, topics you're interested in, he can organize them and then present them. And I actually, um, I do have a question, but it's not budget related. Um, and I just thought we could talk about it briefly. Uh, the Center for Active Living has an article coming up, project design for the Center for Active Living. There's been discussion, given the decline in enrollment and the size of the new Foster School, if Plymouth River should have been a consideration as a location for the new senior center. And I wondered if you could speak to why this is not a viable option for consideration?
Absolutely, thank you. And again, this is a question I can only newly truly answer. Again, the first step that we took, um, we did feel a responsibility, given that our last enrollment study was two thousand and eighteen, um, that we wanted to make sure we were working with very current information. And so um, the the study that we, as as we have digested, um, is projecting over the next ten years um, an increase at the elementary level, which is not trending in a direction that would indicate um, a need for redistricting at this time. Um, in speaking with the demographer, um, many districts um, maintain that NESDEC partnership um, for annual updates. And so I will recommend um, that our district um, maintains that relationship. So we're, rather than thinking of this as an every ten-year um, uh, partnership, um, the NESDEC also provides other additional data that I do think uh, will be very helpful. Um, but again, in looking at the parsing out the elementary, middle and high school enrollment trends that we see, um, given that we um, anticipate seeing an uptick in um, elementary, um, I do think um, based on my very initial uh, assumptions of of redistricting is unlikely. The other thing I would just point out, um, Ayesha mentioned our growing pre-K program. Um, so we are increasing our pre-K enrollment and um, pre-K classrooms. Um, I would also just caution um, that there is a current movement towards the universal pre-K. Um, it has been um, an an objective of the Healy administration. I don't think it's something happening in within the next year or two, but something um, to take into consideration uh, when we're looking at building usage. Many um, enrollment, um, so depending on which site you're looking at to look at enrollment, um, some websites will only be sharing our K-five enrollment. But we do have a robust pre-K program as well that isn't factored in uh, to enrollment data, depending on which source you're looking at. Um, pre-K is not considered elementary. And so if you are looking at just at K-five um, data, it doesn't share the full picture.
And it also, it also doesn't include KIA as well. Um, this is only the public school registered data. And for KIA for this year, as well as having six integrated preschool classrooms, we'll also have six KIA preschool classes this year, which will take up a substantial amount of space in our East Elementary School. Um, those numbers are not included in anything that we have shown tonight as well. But it should be factored out in terms of capacity and usage of the building as well.
And then returning to the out-of-district conversation as well, um, one area that we are looking to explore is to pull some of the specialized programming in district. And so the potential program, um, for example, that we're looking to partner with um, the social collaborative on, it would actually be um, bringing income in. So we will be renting the classroom to the collaborative if we do uh, proceed with it. Um, three of our students would um, have guaranteed spots in the program. And um, we would have um, additional students from out of district coming in. And so that's another um, piece of the of the puzzle um, as we're looking specifically at our elementary space. Um, the last point I would just make about Plymouth River specifically is we did just come off of a a building project at Plymouth River for which we accepted MSBA funds um, for our windows and columns project at Plymouth River. If that um, um, building does not remain a school, we will need to refund that MSBA money to the state.
That's about a million dollars.
Help for how long?
Ayesha, what's the, what's the look back on that?
I'm not sure exactly how long, but we're definitely, considering that it happened now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're in year one of the look, yeah, of the look back. But we can, we can certainly um, uh, clarify that. It's a good question.
Yep.
It's at least.
It's at least then, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. You're gonna muzzle the rest of your committee?
Sorry, I'm sorry. We have a meeting on Thursday and I feel like it makes good sense at nine twenty when we have six articles to get through, unless anyone has anything pressing. I, I think we're willing to wait till Thursday. Thank you.
I did see folks taking notes, so I know that.
I'm shaking up.
Okay. Thank you. So we will then move to a discussion and possible votes on the two thousand and twenty-five Annual Town Meeting warrant articles. And the first one we have before us is Article R from the school, high school roof replacement. Oh, actually, oh, did they not want to stay here for this? Okay, so before we proceed, we are going to take a two-minute recess. I think AdCom wants to uh, adjourn to a different location or you, you want to stay?
We're not gonna adjourn. Um, but I think some people aren't gonna stay for the articles and some of us are.
It's scintillating.
I'm, I'm staying.
Okay.
Can't wait.
Okay, so let's take.
You're free to go.
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll take a, we're gonna take a two-minute recess. People who need to leave can leave. You need to get some water, take water and then we'll resume. Okay, we are resuming and I will first ask the Advisory Committee whether they continue to have a quorum.
We no longer have a quorum, so our meeting is adjourned.
Yes, your meeting.
We'd like to participate and listen to this discussion.
We're welcome.
Oh, wait. We're not adjourned. We do have a quorum.
Okay.
Stephen Kevin online.
That, Mr. Pole, I see Mr. Pole there. Okay. Okay, so we can now move to Article R, which is the high school roof project. Ayesha.
Thank you. So in terms of the roof, the roof at the high school, um, we've, we've had, we've had the pleasure of um, inviting the the advisory and the select board into the high school to actually, well, not climb the roof, but actually look at some of the spots where um, we've seen significant leaking of the roof and um, where some of, some of our technology could possibly have been compromised. And as part of overall, the five acres of roofing at the high school, in terms, we've had an assessment done of the roof at the high school and the project, and in terms of that assessment, the results that came back from that assessment showed that the roof seams and um, and it's in definitely in the, in the, in this repair. And it's something that has been suggested that we um, look towards replacing as soon as possible because of that repair. Um, because the roof.
Term is failed.
The roofs have failed. The roofs have failed. And um, and in terms of that, um, because of that and because primarily um, the high school, we do not have a spot in town if that roof should fail to house the students at the high school, we think it most prudent to move towards um, ensuring that we can replace that roof as soon as possible.
Um, so is there, I know there's not a dollar amount in the warrant article, but is there a budgeted item that uh, we should be looking at? The reason I ask is that often these projects are, there's a warrant article for study, for schematic design, for the cost, then a second warrant article saying, no, now we have the cost, let's go forward with it.
Right.
What is your plan for the high school roof?
So we do have an assessment that has been done and an estimated cost associated with it. But because we do not have um, the actual schematics in terms of the construction documents and the design of the roof as yet, um, part of the cost that we got from the assessment will include that schematic design. Um, and because of the emergence nature, nature of the roof, we think it prudent to to move forward with that assessment value in mind.
So un- unlike the other roof warrant articles that we see here where you've got a schematic, you're combining the schematic as well as with the construction?
Exactly, yes.
Um, which, I guess the the dollar amount for, that you'd be asking that the recommended motion would be coming is, it sounds like it would be speculative because we really don't know what the cost is.
Um, that that is the case, but I think in terms of the assessment that was done, it was done by Habib and Associates, who is um, an engineering and architectural firm. So I think we can put some reliance on that information as well.
Are you looking, have any um, and Tom, you may have to correct me if I'm going afoul, but um, have any um, potential contractors look at the roof so that we have more, more precise numbers when we go to town meeting?
We, um, because this is January now, we could actually begin the process of putting out to bid so we can get that um, those numbers in um, as well. And we can work towards that as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Liz, any questions?
Uh, just a, just a comment. I do think that this is an urgent request. Um, and certainly, I think we've learned the hard way about preventative maintenance and maintenance of town buildings. Um, so I, I support the roof replacement at the high school. I would obviously want to understand the financials and get an estimate. Um, I'd also want to understand what the additional cost is for the solar installation and what the payback and, you know, just what that looks like in general. Um, so I think it would be helpful, and I'm sure helpful to AdCom to have the budget before they come up with the recommended motion.
Awesome. Um, that sounds like something that we can work towards. Thank you.
So is what is, I should ask, are you contemplating a roof replacement including solar?
We are contemplating it in terms of, and looking at the cost of that and weighing those options as well.
Got it. Um, we don't typically turn to AdCom for this, but.
But the, the current estimate does not include that, yeah.
You are here as a committee. Do you have any questions on this at this point?
Unmuted.
I did.
She's unmuted.
Um, I, I do and I, if, just quickly, um, when you do, I I apologize that I don't understand the process better, but do you get more than one estimate for the, for these projects?
So typically, what we would do is we'd write up a plan um, in terms of the specs, the specs for the roof in terms of what we need. And then we'd have to put it out to bid um, um, into the design and construction costs. And usually, we get multiple um, responses back. Um, in the case of design, um, we have the option usually to do an RFP, which gives us um, base, we can look at other factors besides just cost uh, into the, the design information. But in terms of construction, normally we have to choose which, we go for the the best cost. Um, um, in terms of that, and it's usually the lowest cost for the most reliable person who can provide the service. So it usually is um, looking at um, multiple um, packages and comparing them to see which one would be the best.
Okay, um, thank you. And I'm taking for granted that you're working with HMLP on the solar discussion?
We have not begun those conversations yet. We have, we had, in fact, probably two years ago, two years ago initiated those conversations, but we haven't um, in the, we haven't currently had those conversations, but it's something that we will have, we will be engaged with them on as well.
Uh, does anybody else have any questions?
I have a quick, quick one. If I understand it properly, is it's necessary probably to hire a consultant to put together an RFP on an informed basis? Is that the correct way to look at it? And if, if it is, do you have an estimate of what the consulting study might cost?
Um, sometimes we, we don't, we don't need to have a consultant to put together the um, the RFP. Um, in terms, I would say that in terms of, so for example, in terms of the assessment that we have so far from Habib, it kind of outlines the need, our needs. So we would probably be able to use a lot of that information as well as our in-house um, maintenance um, facilities directors and engineer as well. So we could come up with a package based on that um, to be able to um, get the specs in for the roof. Um, and there will, and in terms of that, we don't have any co- any, uh, we don't have the cost right now in terms of any reliance on any consultants for that purpose as well.
Our, our in-house um, facilities director is very, very experienced with this um, kind of project. And so um, I don't see a need to go out.
Well, I guess my only concern would be if the project is not scoped appropriately, it could lead to a lot of changes and disagreement and even litigation, I would think. So I think, personally, I think it'd be useful to have a more rounded out um, sense of what the, what would be in the RFP, what would need to be considered. And I'm assuming that costs my, to put it together, perhaps not. I'm not trying to play engineer, but just a thought.
Yeah, again, the, I do think that the Habib study, and I believe we've shared that um, previously um, with a select, with the Advisory Committee, we're happy to share that again.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the presentation, we're happy to share that as well. It did provide some of um, that level of detail. of that level of detail.
November 4th was your facilities manager's presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe there were a couple of questions from the committee and from the audience that were directed towards Habib, and they did answer a couple of those questions. I believe it was November 4th.
Okay. And obviously, you don't know what the roof is going to cost, but the.
We do have, I mean, they, they did provide us with an estimate on all three roofs. And then it's also, they also provided us with an estimate three years prior, prior to when the COVID prices were driving the construction costs up. And they give us estimate then, and then we went back to them and asked us for a reestimate due to the increase in cost. So they've been, they've been looking at these roofs for about three years now.
Okay. Is, is there an estimate for just the design, architectural, and engineering?
The, it's all-inclusive.
Oh, okay. So it's not.
The cost of construction for the high school roof was estimated at $11,245 with a total cost of $14,619,000. That includes some of those other softer costs.
Thank you.
And, and we can share, we can share those documents with you if it's going to be helpful in terms of answering some of those questions as well.
John is going to be the liaison for that article, John Germain, so.
Okay.
He'll get to know him. Just also, one last quick one. Are you looking for MSBA funding for the high school roof?
We are, and part of the agenda for tonight includes three SOIs on there as well. The SOIs are statements of interest, where we will be entering this year, that it's actually open, the MSBA has an open day accelerated program, and we have the, we have the ability this year to, to apply for those grants for all three of the roofs. So we will be doing so to meet the March deadline, and part of the vote tonight will ensure that we can do so. If we don't get accepted into the program, there is going to be no program next year, but there'll be a program in 2027 again.
So after we've finished the warrant article discussions, that we, we're going to be taking up these statement of interest with the MSB.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any member of the public? Questions? Okay, so from the select board standpoint, I think there is unanimous agreement that it's important that we move forward with the roof, roof replacement at the high school. I think Liz, you and I both visited, we saw, we, we witnessed the drips, and we think there's going to be some work to make sure that this is done properly, but we're, I think we're prepared to support this. So at this point, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article R.
Second, a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We move to Article T, which is the high school turf field replacement.
Okay. In terms of the turf field, we also had a meeting on the turf field and had a Capitol Day on Saturday where we visited the turf field and actually looked at those spots, those spots on the turf that needed to be replaced, and the buoyancy of the turf as well. And that had been measured by an outside consultant. The recreation department has been very instrumental in terms of working with us on this and providing feedback and of the testing performed, the concussion testing and other testing performed. We also have a report available on that turf and the need for replacement as well, and that we can share with you. There was also another presentation that was done on December 2nd as well, in terms of why replace the turf at this point in time.
Can you just speak a little bit about the safety issues associated with the need for replacement and what you've looked at in terms of going with turf field as, as an appropriate replacement?
In terms of the turf field, the, the testing done was on, on concussion testing and the buoyancy, I think the buoyancy is how described of the, of the, the field and certain patches. And it was found that in some areas, the count was very low or very, very low and wasn't appropriate for what the standard is, based on the standards that exist for, for those, for turf field at, at the high school. And we wanted to make sure that in terms of recommending the replacement at this time, to make sure that it could, it could be available for our students as well, and we wouldn't have, we would have that available for the students in terms of, for the safe, for safety reasons, as well as to make sure that in terms of the, the games that are played at that turf, that they will have the facility available for that as well, too.
Right.
So there's, so in terms of concussion testing, that's one. And in terms of, your second question was concuss, safety and.
So.
And turf, and why not turf, right?
Yes.
In terms of the, the turf.
Right. I mean, so for example, we, we've heard concerns and other circumstances about the leaching of chemicals and how that may affect kids who are playing on the fields.
Right. And in terms of the material that we've, we've looked at, or the consultant had provided, we were more or less comfortable with what was being presented in terms of what, what the risks to our students would be, particularly since at the high school, what happens at the high school is that there are measures of the heat and when play can happen and when play can't happen. And based on those measurements, I think we can safely say that it would, that our students would not be at risk by having those, those two, the turf being used at that point in time. And if it is that it's on a very hot day, for example, part of our tour, one of our tours that we did, the athletics director actually walked with us to say that, that their measurement's done about how hot it is on a particular day. And based on that, where the risk might be highest, students will not be allowed to play on those days.
Got it.
So I think that precautions are put in place as well to make sure that our students are always safe.
Thank you.
One thing I would just add as well, the turf does allow for, for more frequent use of the field, including by our youth sports. If the field was not the more durable turf, it is unlikely we would be able to allow the youth sports to use the field to the same extent. We just wouldn't be able to keep grass in good enough shape for continued use throughout the season, particularly during the football season.
Liz?
I, I'm going to just have Jen Benham add too. So she's chair of the finance, capital, and facilities, and also the vice chair of the school committee. So I'm going to have her add some.
Sure.
Sure. I just want to just add to what Aisha was speaking about. It was, it was the, for the testing that the company does, they do the, it's called the GMAX force, and then they also measure the infill amount on the turf field. And in certain areas, it was like three fourths of an inch, whereas the recommended is one and a half an inch. And there's been multiple areas that they have done patches on the turf field. And then the more and more patches that they put out there, the patches just don't take and the seams fail.
Yeah, we saw the patches and it was, it was noticeable.
I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz?
Do we have a quote or a budget estimate for this one?
So the estimate for this one is $880,000, and the revolving funds that we have available are $250,000 that will be applied to that as well.
Great, thank you.
Tina?
Our liaison is Ted Seokis for this article, and he's not here, and this is going to be a much larger conversation, so I don't think we need to talk about that at this time.
Great. So again, I think Liz and I both walked the turf field, the field that's there now. And at least from my perspective, I don't think it's safe to, to keep it as it is. So I think we do, we need to move forward. Liz?
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article T.
Second, roll call vote?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We move to Article U, which is bus leases that Aisha has forecasted for us.
Yes. So we're excited to, in terms of this warrant article, we actually have two articles that we've discussed as part of the, the bus leases. And I'm just want to make sure that I'm saying, I'm doing the right thing here in terms of, you only have U, but U comprises of two optional articles, or two articles, not optional. One of the articles provides the school committee, first of all, the bus leases are something that we, every five years, we get into for our, our transportation, and it's become more or less a regular activity that we are part of from, from year, from five year, every five years. And because of that, we think that it's something that if, if, if the, if the authority for approval of those leases moves from town meeting to the school committee, it would allow us to take advantage of cost benefits, if there are cost benefits, quick decision-making about the buses, rather than waiting for town meeting from one year to the year, from one, from every, from year to year. So as part of this warrant article, we're asking town meeting to give us the approval for the school committee to have the authority to approve bus leases between three to 10 years going forward.
And what, what is the budget impact?
There's no additional budget impact, but from year to year, our buses, so for example, our current bus lease is $12,000 per bus for a regular diesel bus. When we look at projections going forward into the next time our buses will be needed, will, our full fleet would have to be replaced would be in 2027. And the prices that we're seeing for bus leases in 2027 are about $22,000 per bus. In terms of the electric school buses, we're looking at also obtaining three electric school buses, which will be highly, if it is, we will get those three school buses that are electric school buses, if it is that the grants are still available to us. And it's, we've put the orders through, and we've gotten all approvals for the grants and everything else so far. But because of some of the, the difficulty with knowing as it stands right now, whether that funding will still be available to us.
Right.
But we want to move forward with everything that we should do in terms of that approval as well, so that if that funding should come through, we will have the ability to get those three buses. The second article is an article that, that require, that asked town, town meeting for approval for one diesel bus and three electric school buses, in addition to the infrastructure that we will need for those electric school buses.
Right. So we have, we have two articles.
Yes. So just to clarify real quick, when we spoke with Aisha and Katie last week, just out of concern that, just in case something happened with Article U and town meeting wasn't interested in, in providing that author, authorization to the school department to enter into these leases, we thought it would be safer to break the article back into two, which you guys had originally proposed. So on tonight, on the vote list, we're seeing, would the board consider basically replacing Article U with Articles SS and TT to just, one of those Articles SS would be to do the four bus lease, the lease for the four buses that Aisha just mentioned, and TT would be able to grant that authority to enter into the longer terms going forward.
So if I'm correct, it would be a motion to withdraw Article UU and replace it with SS and TT?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Right. Right. Got it.
Thanks, Michelle.
So Tom, let me just ask a procedural question. Why does the school committee need town meeting vote to approve these leases?
I can answer if you need help.
Please.
From, from 30B only allows us three years.
Oh, right.
For a lease.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Liz, any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. So Aisha, did you say that we'll do the electric school buses if we get the grants?
So we've gotten approval for those grants, but just because of some of the uncertainty around, around grants and.
Are they state or federal grants?
They're federal grants.
Okay, so I guess my question remains, are we only doing the electric school buses if there's no grant?
If the.
If the grant comes through?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Another question about just the number of school buses, just wondering if this matters with the transportation fees. Are you estimating that we'll need less buses? I imagine some families will just drive.
Right. And in terms of the elementary students, that remains unchanged.
Right.
And we have the four elementary schools with two different times. So then, in terms of that, it means that we will still need to transport those, those kids.
Okay, so there's no savings based on the middle school kids?
So there'll be no, and then, and for, and for sixth grade as well, we would have to, to also transport based on the law, all of sixth grade.
Right.
Which would be a reduction in the number of buses that we would need for that grade. One of the things, Mr. Porrick, who is the transportation director coordinator, also mentioned as well is that there, we, he also believes that there is a potential for a lot of students or families who currently may be within the two-mile radius, who in the past would not have an option for bus services because they're, they're walkers. Some families have also asked many times to be able to pay a fee.
Sure.
Right.
To transport their kids. They may be working families where just being able to, to have a bus pick up the kid is more efficient for them as a family.
Right.
So we think that even with the fee being instituted as well, we may have a few, even at the elementary level, a few, a few families requesting those services. So the other thing too is that the bus lease is up in 2027. So the, the good thing about having this pilot or this, this transportation fee implemented within this year, it gives us an opportunity to actually run the course and see whether we can in any way or we should reduce the number of buses as we go out to lease in 2027 for the full fleet.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And I assume there's a fuel savings if we go with the electric bus?
Definitely.
Okay, Tina, anything on this?
Steve Paul is the liaison for this article. I don't know, Steve, if you have any questions at this time. This is a complicated now to articles, so I'm not sure. We want to delve into it tonight, but if you have anything to ask?
Not at this late hour. I'll do some, I will follow.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. So with that, I will take a motion first to withdraw Article U.
Okay, I will make a motion to open the warrant for the 20.
Are we going to withdraw this first?
I think that's this, isn't it?
Are we looking at a?
Open the warrant and withdraw and remove? Am I saying the wrong thing?
Did John give you this, this language?
We got it, so.
Is that not correct?
I guess it can be done that way. I would, I would have done it your way, Liz, but it can be done this way, I think.
No, go ahead.
Is the vote language I have correct or not?
Yeah, that is correct. I, I was looking at something else. Go ahead.
I will make a motion to open the warrant for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting pursuant to Town of Hingham General Bylaws, Article II, Section 7, and remove Article U, school bus leases, and replace it with Article SS, school bus leases, and Article TT, school bus lease terms.
Second, roll call vote.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Now we need to do the second one.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article SS.
Second, roll call vote.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. And Liz?
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article TT.
Second, roll call vote.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, I think we've handled buses. Now we move on to Article QQ. And that is the Plymouth River School Roof Schematic Design.
Okay. In keeping with the MSBA's timeline as well, one of the considerations the school committee had as part of, in keeping that timeline, was to request that town meeting provide us funding for schematic design at this point. We haven't gone out to find out the actual cost of the schematic design, but we will before town meeting to get an estimate of what that will be. The timing for MSBA's process is to close the application period at end of March, and then in October, we get a decision. When we get a decision from, if we get a favorable decision from MSBA in October, we would have 90 days to get schematic designs done. And then 12 months. And then 12 months to actually get funding for the roofs. So the idea is to move forward with the schematic designs first and then um, move forward with um, approval from town meeting the following year for construction. Um, we thought that that process was also, we had a little bit more leeway with the elementary schools where particularly South, where although the, the roof is also, has also failed in many areas, we have a little bit more latitude in terms of that roof compared to the high school.
So, um, with respect to the high school roof, I know you had some schematic designs. Am I correct? You've had some, you've had the cost of the schematic designs estimated. Um, can we use that as an approximate estimate for getting these schematic designs?
So we, we have an assessment which includes all the costing, so we can definitely do that, yes, for those. Because we have the full cost of the roof for the South and, and, and P R S, so we can get the, pull out the cost of the schematic, schematic designs from that as well.
Any questions?
So my, my question is, um, Article QQ, the way it's written, it says Plymouth River and South. As, as Article RR does as well, mentions both schools and I think we want them separate, correct?
Yes, please.
Yes, we'll have to revise the language in these two articles. But any question on, on the schematic?
No, I, I understand the process. I think it makes sense to go forward. Hopefully we get MSBA funding.
Yep. And this, as I understand it, is not a commitment to do those roofs. It's just a commitment on the schematics.
Exactly, yes.
And I assume it's too late for Mr. Poll to ask any questions.
This article and uh, South are both Brian Stack's articles.
Oh, okay.
Is there a cost estimate to this article?
So, not at this moment, but we will have a cost estimate.
We'll get it.
Okay, um, Brian, do you have any additional questions tonight?
Not right now, no. Not.
But procedurally, we want to get in line with the MSBA. Um, and hopefully we can use the information from the high school process to inform us as to at least getting it, beginning cost on the schematics. Okay, so with respect to uh, Article uh, QQ and RR, um, the favorable actions will be limiting those articles to those respective schools.
So I.
Procedural question?
Sure.
And Michelle, you can jump in here too. These are the, this is the article language as it came in at the deadline. I think we should let that change be, uh, happen. Either you guys, you withdraw it, re-add it, open the warrant with a new, um, a new article as in a vote, or let the, let the AdCom change it in their motion. But I, I leave it to you guys. I don't think you can, in your favorable action vote, just change the article.
Okay. Got it, so I think what we're talking about, I think we should correct it here.
So bring it back next week. With, with the amended.
Yeah, so we, we, we need corrected language on this. Because what we have has Article QQ covering both schools.
Okay.
And then Article RR also covers both schools.
Do you want to see?
But that may just be our. That might just be a typo.
I think it's our office's typo. They came in correctly from Ayesha. I think the language was just copied twice without deleting it.
Oh, so what, so the article as submitted was correct?
Yes, both of them were.
What we're, what we're looking at is. Okay. Good catch, Liz. Okay, so then uh, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article QQ.
Second, roll call vote.
Aye.
It gives the option for adoption. Um, one of the things that we've done as part of this article as well is to include um, funding as part of our capital requests for the cameras that will be on the buses. And um, should that capital funding be approved, then we would have pilot funding for that program for approximately three buses. So the school committee also would need to um, look at the MOU with the police department as well as policies and procedures in terms of how this will work as well. So there'll be some work to be done in addition to um, once that article has, or if that article is approved by town meeting. Um, but I think because that article gives us the option, we'd like to move forward with that as well.
So we're talking about cameras that are looking outside the bus.
That's right.
Cameras in the bus.
Yeah.
And the purpose is really for motor vehicle safety to make sure that cars stop when the, when the lights are on for the bus.
Exactly, and there's some areas where um, the, the school committee members and Superintendent Roberts has mentioned that um, we definitely know that we have a few instances of people driving ahead of the buses. So it's an issue that exists in certain main streets in Hingham. So we hope that this will be one of those um, things that will be put in place. And once people know that they're, they're, they're cameras on the buses, we won't have any more issues anymore.
Do you know if, uh, if our neighboring communities have similar?
I know it's fairly new.
The law was passed on January 10th. And so um, other districts are, um, in a similar.
Okay. And any estimate of the budget cost?
Yes, um, so each camera um, for, to equip each bus would be roughly 3,000. And so we propose um, to outfit three buses for the first year. Um, in addition to the actual physical cost of the camera, we're just wondering about the manpower involved in reviewing tapes and so on. So we wanted to kind of um, get a process established. And again, have been in conversations with Chief Jones um, about it. And um, we'll have to do some work with the policy committee just to review our policy around camera use and also our current MOU with the police.
Got it.
So Joe, this, this article was submitted at the request of the traffic committee who took in this vote in favor of J.R. Frye, the chair of that committee, is on.
JR, do you want to add any, uh, I see your hand raised, uh, any comments?
Uh, yes, just wanted to uh, again, voice uh, from the traffic committee, our support for this article. Um, this was something that was uh, that came about statewide from a general consensus that uh, there was an issue with school bus safety. Two uh, towns in the North Shore, um, rather, one town, one city in the North Shore, uh, did a pilot program on this. And um, in those larger communities, uh, they were seeing about two incidents a day for um, within their communities of uh, vehicles passing a stopped school bus. Um, and recently, uh, in Plymouth, there was one that was caught on a Ring camera um, where uh, a child exiting the home, trying to walk through his driveway and a vehicle chose to pass the bus by driving through their driveway, um, nearly striking the child. So it's um, it does appear to be a significant problem on a statewide basis. I don't think it, it might not be quite as prevalent in Hingham, but we've had reports from the bus drivers that it does happen. Um, in terms of the um, implementation of that, having talked with Sergeant Kilroy, um, when the bus drivers observe an incident, um, they will, they can communicate that back to uh, their transportation head. And all of that information can get passed over to um, one of the officers who will then review the tapes based on location and time. Um, it should significantly cut the duration. You're not going to have to look at every tape throughout the entire uh, day or week that the bus was driving. You would simply observe um, a small fraction of that.
Thank you, JR.
Yep.
I will say, I don't know if you could see it, but as you were telling the story, Michelle's eyes were like, oh my God. She was very concerned. Any uh, any other questions? Anyone from uh, AdCom on this?
Dave's article, Dave, do you have anything to put first tonight?
Oh, yeah. Uh, I don't, so the. Cameras cost $3,000 each and we want to buy three of them, is that right?
Yes, just to be a pilot.
Okay, just want to make sure I heard that right, thank you. Liz?
No questions. Um, I think the pilot program is a good idea. Um, certainly encourage you to work with Chief Jones um, on this. But um, obviously, safety and getting to school, home, getting to and from school safely is a priority for us. Um, so certainly takes the traffic committee's recommendation. And thank you for bringing it forward, JR.
Yes, thank you. I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article LL.
Second, roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We now move to considering the statement of interest for the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program for the roofs at Hingham High School, Plymouth River Elementary School and South Elementary School. Ayesha, Katie?
As part of the MSBA process, one of the things that the MSBA likes to make sure of is that there's community support for any applications that are put forward by the superintendent of schools. Um, and as part of that, um, the, the um, MSBA has suggested language for a vote that the select, that the, that the school committee has taken. So the school committee has taken a similar vote that we're requesting that the select board take tonight. Um, um, the MSBA likes to know that there's school committee support um, as well as select board support for those um, applications. And just to make sure that the, the, the superintendent hasn't gone awry and just put through an application on their own, but the community is behind the superintendent on those um, applications. So that is the main reason for um, for us coming to you tonight for that vote. It's funny because in terms of doing my research for this, um, I think I look back when the Foster vote, similar vote for the SOI took place. And I think it was Michelle who signed off on it. Michelle Aya, Mrs. Aya, as well as maybe um, Mr. Paul Healy?
Yep.
I think he was the, the, I'm the select person on the committee at the time and had signed off on the um, SOI back then. Um, so not only will you be taking that, this vote tonight, but in addition to this, um, we will then, I will then go to the, the town clerk to get the vote signed off by the town clerk, confirming that this vote has taken place. And once our application has been completed, I will put in your email address and you'll get an email in your inbox to physically sign off on the SOI as well.
Okay.
So it'll be um, a two-stage, three-stage process.
Got it, and um, it's important that we create a public record to make it clear that we are in support of this. Uh, and we need to get that to the MSBA.
Exactly, thank you.
Okay, so. Liz, I'm prepared to accept a motion. I'll do the. You would say? I move the following.
I move the following, resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on February 4th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 2025 for the Hingham High School located at 17 Union Street, Hingham, Massachusetts 02043, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future Priority Five Replacement, Renovation or Modernization of School Roofs. The membrane roofing has exceeded its 20-year warranty and is nearing the end of its 25-year life expectancy. The EPDM rubber system and extremely durable synthetic rubber roofing membrane is in poor condition with evident seam separation and damage. Additionally, significant ponding is present and leaks throughout the building are impacting educational, athletic and physical plant operations and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Town of Hingham to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I'll second that, roll call vote.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, I'll do the next one. I move the following, I, resolved. Having convened in an open session on February 4th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 2025 for the Plymouth River Elementary School located at 200 High Street, Hingham, Mass. 02043, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future Priority Five Replacement, Renovation or Modernization of School Roofs. Did I miss this line here? Um, renovation, uh, school roofs. Uh, most of the low-slope flat roofs are tar and gravel systems installed in 1999 and nearly all are in poor condition. Ponding is evident across the flat sections indicating problems with the drainage system. Gravel has migrated into the gutters on the slope roof and sealant failure, failure is visible in many areas. Recently, a large section near the gymnasium was repaired due to leaks affecting the building's main electrical feed and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Town of Hingham to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, and we have one more motion.
I so move, resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on February 4th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board of the Town of Hingham, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 2025 for the South Elementary School located at 831 Main Street, Hingham, Massachusetts 02043, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future Priority Five Replacement, Renovation or Modernization of Roofs. The EPDM rubber system and extremely durable synthetic rubber roofing membrane is in fair to poor condition with visible seam separation and damage. Significant ponding and bubbling are also present. Excessive patching was absor- observed on many of the low-slope flat sections of the roof. The membrane roofing has exceeded its 20-year warranty and is nearing the end of its 25-year life expectancy. The three-tab asphalt shingles are a lower-grade option compared to architectural shingles and should be replaced. Notable patched areas were also observed on this type of roof and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Town of Hingham to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second, roll call vote.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Did you want to re, repeat that one more time? Okay, um, so those will be fully incorporated into our record and we will have the appropriate documentation available for you, thank you. We next move on to our agenda. Public comment, is any member of the, a comment on items that are not on our agenda? Seeing none, we. Seeing none, we move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports. Art?
I have none this evening, thank you.
That was the right answer. Michelle?
Nothing, thank you.
Liz?
I just have one thing. There's going to be a cab meeting on Friday at noon, so if you have.
Citizens Advisory Board for the Water.
For Water, yes. So if people have comments, questions, join, it'll be a Zoom meeting Friday at noon.
And what about the Lincoln Day celebration?
Sure.
I don't know the time. Is it? I think it's ten or ten thirty.
It's ten AM, I think.
Starts at ten. And it is a an event that the town. I'm sorry? It's an event that the town does every year, honors our tradition, and the town-wide invitation is extended. I've got nothing else. I'm prepared to accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make.
What? I'm sorry, can't. That's right, we need to have AdCom.
We lost one of our members, so we no longer have a farm, so we are adjourned.
Okay. Now I'll take a motion. Oh, school committee, I'm sorry. Would you like to stay or do you want to adjourn? We're going to keep you for, okay.
I have an eighth grader whose homework I have still correcting. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All those in favor, Ally?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you.
Now, I'll take a motion for the Select Board.
I'll make a more a motion to adjourn the Select Board meeting.
Second, roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your attention and devotion to the town.
Thank you.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the MyHingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the MyHingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play, or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using MyHingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the MyHingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.